Call the work session to order. Did we have minutes from last time?
No.
Okay, so we'll do them next meeting.
I'm still working on it.
Okay, we'll get those next meeting then. All right, so what do we have in front of us here for submissions tonight? We have application number one, we have some items, number two, number three, uh, number four.
How did it happen?
I don't know. Number five, six. Number six, and on the table.
Is seven tabled or not?
Seven is not tabled. It's, you're gonna hear it tonight for the first time, the planning board heard it under preliminary final last month and tabled it. Oh, I'm sorry, last week they tabled it. And it's been tabled pending decision on your part or this board? By this board. And planning board is the lead agency on this application under SEER. So they've gotta make some changes and.
Yeah, so we can. So should we air it?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
And then.
But you're not.
Table it right away. Yep, just table it right away. All right. And what about, um, is that?
And then, would you, just stay with this one for a moment. You may wanna do some type of documentation or a memo or something to the planning board indicating your thoughts.
Our feelings, oh, yeah, okay, okay. So let's go to our tabled matters. Salvatores, I understand, and I wasn't able to print it out today, but we did have a new site plan that Zach sent out to me earlier today. I really.
I have a copy.
If I understand correctly, the site plan, the new site plan, was anybody here on this application? Fantuzzo's tabled application?
No.
Okay, do we know any, is the applicant requesting a dispe table as well, or?
The applicant, Matt was with us the other day at PRC. Actually, Marie was gonna not to attend that meeting.
Okay.
Our thoughts regarding that application was, and I wasn't fully involved with the application from last meeting that you had, but from what I understand, they submitted an application and they didn't have all the information as to the specific setback requirements that they were asking for, and what the specific green space requirement was that they were asking for. You had asked them to provide that information, tabled the matter, asked them to provide the information. They came back with another plan, which I'm taking out here for you. The plan identifies a larger second building than what they showed you because when they went out and had an engineering drawing done versus an architectural drawing.
Larger second building?
It came out larger, and as a result, the question that PRC had, it's strictly up to the board, it's how you wanna handle it. Because they did not ask for specific numbers for their setback in the advertisements for the public, you have the ability, if you want to, to continue on with the application based on the fact that you were asking for additional information, or the building comes in larger than it was the first time around, you have the other option of asking to withdraw their application and resubmit under a new application, which we can do for next month because the deadline hasn't come up yet.
Is it?
It's bigger, yeah.
I guess it also depends on what our feelings were with the existing size. I mean, if they're gonna make a figure and we weren't really happy with the first one when it was less.
I'm gonna show you.
Well, let me ask you this question, just for giggles. If we okay it by, if we turn it down, I mean, is it, can, do they resubmit the new one next month? I mean, do they have to wait a year? Is it that substantially different?
We could do no prejudice in that.
Yeah, you know what, I would rather debate and vote on the application that the applicant wants us to. That makes sense. If the one before us is no longer the plan, then, you know, withdraw it and resubmit it is what I would suggest.
What's before the planning board? Because, is there something now before the planning board on that one?
Oh, yeah.
Because they're in sketch plan.
Okay.
Because there was an issue there, you guys thought also that there might be an issue with drainage, and so you wanted to do a coordinated review. It's like you might as well just, I mean, it's up to you, but when they were here last time, I remember, they weren't sure what they wanted, and it made that hearing almost useless in a way. So you may wanna consider denying without prejudice.
So deny without prejudice or table to get input from the applicant?
Yeah, and I think the applicants will be here later on, and I think they're assuming that the discussion will take place after the public hearing. So they may come in with a plan. The plan that I have, and Marie was there, I suggested to them that, look, if the board comes to a point where they deny it, and they deny it based on what you're asking for, and you're not willing to change that plan, they have to wait a year before they can come back unless you find.
Right, unless we said, or do it without prejudice because there are, we haven't made a decision.
Exactly.
And that's why I'm almost wondering if we should table and let them come in and withdraw. So there's not that issue of having to wait a year.
Well, I also would give them, they wanted to bring a smaller building in, although I'm not certain it's smaller than what they showed you last month, and it may not be. If that's the case, I mean, in the same boat, they should just withdraw and come back in next.
Yes, yes.
So the one that is in sketch plan now before the planning board is larger?
It is.
Yeah. I don't remember the square footage, like how much larger.
You think they may be here later?
I believe they are, yes. They were coming around.
So I do, is it the end then?
Yeah, well, I'd, it'd be easier without here, I suppose.
Yeah.
Okay, so then let's go to tonight's applications and talk about the new stuff we have and see if there's any questions for clarity. So what do we have on number one here? What more submissions do we have? Didn't we have this already, the August 20th resume?
Yeah, I think there was the old one.
Yeah.
And while you're looking at this, just a couple of comments from the PRC. They do show a revised leach field area on the property, which they didn't have the first time, and they were very concerned about the fact that, you know, there was no identification as to where the leach field was. Now they're showing a leach field, and they're indicating that they comply with county standards for leach fields. The question you should ask is if they've been to the county health department to determine whether or not the health department approved the leach field as proposed. The other part of that is if they need to expand it, there's not much area left other than where the barn is on the site now.
Which was, I think, the problem with the first time.
Exactly.
I think so too.
So the issue will be, can they actually do it? Then the other problem is if he sells the house, and another group wants to come in and add a bedroom or something, they may or may not be able to do that based on the size of the leach field and the system itself, so.
And what about the drainage? I read something about the drainage on a property too. He said, if something, I'll add something else, is what I read.
Well, I think, you know, they're not disturbing that much area. They don't have to meet the SWIP requirements because they're under, I think they're under an acre if I'm not mistaken. But they're gonna have to treat water, you know, before discharge, they can't directly discharge on a neighbor's property, it's gotta be treated.
Yeah, well, that's what I.
And they would have to do something on site, maybe a drywall or something of that.
Yeah, and that's what he said, if we have to, I would, but they don't show it.
That would be an engineering issue that engineers in our, up in the department would have to take care of and have them comply with.
All right, so that would be County Department of Health, CAS.
That's right.
Yeah, because the paperwork for the application was nearly identical except for two numbers changed.
Yeah.
There, that's it. Everything else was verbatim copied.
Yeah, okay. All right, so, number two, what do we get on number two?
Number two doesn't appear to be an issue with anybody. It's probably a good addition to the neighborhood, you don't have anything like that in that area. The only comment I'd make to the board is there is a freestating sign which the board did approve several years ago. Actually, I was on the board of the plan, they did it, I was sort of the board of the plan, they did it. The freestating sign has fallen into a state of disrepair. There are absolutely no legible, you know, tenants on that sign, and we may wanna ask the applicant to talk to the owner of the property to see what's gonna be done, if they're gonna add his name to that sign, or if they're gonna clean that sign up a little bit.
You can do that.
Or take it down.
All right, and I guess I, I think we should also cover the issue of parking. From my notes reflected, he's gonna be open on Sunday mornings, or, you know, 10:30 or so.
And I think there's a huge problem with outside tables. I mean, it's about a five-foot sidewalk there with steps, so I'll ask him.
They will have to maintain entrance to the building.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know where they're gonna put new tables, but I'll ask him where he thinks.
So on three, what do we have? The opposite, that came via email as well, right?
You got the letter of.
A handwritten letter from a neighbor that cannot make it in tonight. All right, heard they seen that. Then jump to number five, and we have a planning board resolution.
So they're just waiting on the variance?
Not for all of them.
For all of them.
Okay, okay.
Of course, you have to deal with the signage issue as well.
Right.
Number six, revised land.
Did you get the letter? I think Zach sent out a letter identifying the planning board's comments back to the applicant when he came in for a sketch plan review.
It might not be here.
We have that, if you don't. And some of the concerns we have at PRC is the fact that he will pick up some additional parking. We obviously do need parking down there.
Yeah.
For a family, what they're doing. The big issue that we're concerned about is the timeframe in which they're proposing to, you know, actually do the work and then get the end product, because right now, I mean, I don't know how long it's gonna take to dispose of that amount of material to get them to a point where they can pull the parking lot out there. If they had a large project where the state DOT was gonna do something and they needed that material in a timely manner, that's one issue, but if this goes on for one or two or three years.
Wow.
You know, those are the types of things you wanna talk about.
What's, isn't this premature before us? There's so many different EPod stuff that has to be dealt with and.
You're correct.
And a bunch of other issues environmentally that aren't part of our purview.
Yeah, and in that letter that Zach gave you, it indicates the fact that they are gonna have to meet with the DEC, they are in an adjacent area to a wetland, there are, as you note, there are several EPod issues that they're gonna have to address. Even the grading could be modified a little bit from a 4% to a 5%, so it would cut down the amount of grade and the amount of material to be taken out. But I think right now, the big thing also is the fact that it could take a long period of time before the parking lot's ever available. That's what we have to ask you.
You might want a coordinated review on that one.
I'd say it's planning board lead, SEER.
The planning board would be the lead agency, and that's another point. You know, and they haven't even gotten to a point where they've made an application of the planning board yet, it's been a sketch plan review. You are an involved agency, but you wouldn't be the lead agency on this because all you're really doing is making a determination as to whether or not a pre-existing non-conforming use can expand. But all the technical issues and all the, you know, site plan issues are all gonna play with the planning board.
And that may be relevant to our determination. I have a more basic question to ask on this one. Where is, what, doesn't he have the right now just to add asphalt to his property?
He doesn't have any area to do it, that's the problem. Everything that is graded.
Oh, no, I understand, but if I own a piece of property and I wanna put asphalt on it, the entire property?
Well, it's not that.
From a town zoning standpoint, I know he's gotta get all these other things.
You have to address stormwater management. You can't just drain everything off your property under your neighbor's property.
But, but, I get, I understand that as well, but what is, where's the jurisdiction of this board, is what I'm just wondering. I can put asphalt, assuming that I take care of drainage and I get the person.
Your jurisdiction is.
What's the use that's being expanded?
You have, you have a function, you have a pre-existing non-conforming use, and in some cases, pre-existing non-conforming uses are good for the town, others they're not.
Right.
The board has to weigh the fact that, number one, you have a use that allows for so much occupancy and so much parking to accommodate it. And now they wanna expand that parking facility, which now expands the use of the property, the use of the pre-existing non-conformers.
Does it, you, you said, put more asphalt, let's say it, and then stripe it, but does that necessarily mean that the use of the property, more people, are more people going, going to be there? As opposed to, they're parking here now and now they.
It may increase occupancy, it may, it may allow for other things to occur in terms of outdoor activities and things that have not occurred there in the past. You did see the letter come in from.
Noise.
Noise.
Yeah, no, I clearly saw that.
Those are the things that start changing the character of the business and the.
Oh, I, I do know that. The fire marshal comes in and says, you can fit this many people in a building. Done, that's all you can fit in there. That was already probably set.
Well, I mean, if there's people who they can add.
Well, yeah, but then they added the tent at one time, right? The one in the front.
Yeah, and again, you gotta look at the pre-existing non-conformous issues.
That's temporary stuff, though, right?
Well, all right.
I mean, as I say, some, there are some pre-existing non-conform uses that are beneficial, and some that aren't. You gotta weigh each one of them and determine, you know, if it warrants consideration.
Yeah, that, that was my question. What is the use that's being?
I don't think anybody's concerned about the fact that they do need more parking.
Oh, sure.
And the use is fine, I mean, the use has been a compliant use, so it's not an issue. But the problem is now, you're going to create a situation where you're basically taking down a portion of a hill, it's gonna take a period of time to do that.
So then, so then what do we do with?
The applicant really get out.
Right.
And there's no real plan as to what they're gonna do with the material. They don't have a clue as to what they're gonna do with the material.
So it could be said, and where would you put it?
To start the project and then not edit it for years.
Plug it up.
So, and I apologize if I just missed this in the conversation or the documents, but where do the wetlands fit in?
The wetlands are adjacent to the property.
Right.
The building itself and the lands that are maintained and mowed and all that, they are not in the wetland. They are, but some of them are the adjacent area. There's a hundred-foot buffer, adjacent buffer to the wetland, and the state DEC has jurisdiction over any type of activity that occurs within that adjacent area. They are gonna have to go to the state DEC for some type of, probably an Article 15 permit.
Okay.
The other issue is that the way they're showing the grading on the plan right now, it actually encroaches into the Monroe County Parks property.
Yeah.
So they're gonna have to talk to Monroe County Parks about this as well.
Are we putting the cart before the horse?
That's what I'm.
Coming here trying to get in some kind of areas.
Well, I mean, you can hear the application, probably should, but you probably table it pending, you know, review by other agencies.
And it may be tabled for two years.
Yeah.
Similar like.
Doesn't make much sense. Well, and I saw that you just recently denied it, denied without prejudice an application based on the fact that it didn't move forward for you as quickly as you wanted. That certainly could happen here in this case as well, and I don't want it to go through years for you.
I guess my point is, you know, we do that, and then they change everything, mitigating circumstances. I mean, we may have a thousand more questions on what they did. So what good is it doing it here and tabling it, and then we vote on what we said here, rather than what the real situation?
You wanna table it, you don't wanna vote.
Oh, I agree with you, I'm not saying that.
A lot of activity taking.
But I mean, should we table it before the hearing?
No, I think you wanna hear it because you wanna hear what the proposal is, obviously you wanna get it on the record.
I think.
But the secret process might take a long time, too.
Right.
You gotta wait for that.
Okay, no problem. And if we need later on to have a new hearing because of that, then, yeah.
So that was.
And it may be modified.
Don't you have to actually complete it within a year? No, that's the problem, you don't. And, you know, we, if it's gonna happen, it's gotta be done in a timely manner, and there's no guarantee at this point. And you're gonna have to ask the applicants how they're gonna deal with that issue, so.
So one of the things I noticed on that application, and I can ask it in public too, was there was some archaeological significance to the.
They may have to do an archaeological survey. We've had that done in every case where we've had materials taken away from the site. That area does have a history of having Native American activity in it. They're gonna have to address that as part of the site plan review process.
Thanks for the clarification.
Okay, and number seven, we're gonna hear the application, but we also anticipate a tabling on that as well.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
What's this one?
Anything else on tonight's agenda?
1300.
Okay, well, then we'll stand, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, it pertains to a parking issue, here it is.
Okay.
There's a certain amount of parking on the site now, beginning a little bit less than that, and they need the audience to do it.
That's for next.
That's for next meeting, yeah.
Oh, okay. All right, so we'll stand in recess and reconvene to start the public hearings in about 10 or 11 minutes. Thank you. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to a regularly scheduled meeting of the Penfield Zoning Board of Appeals. Tonight's meeting's gonna take place in two parts. The first part will be our public hearings. We will read the application and then ask the applicant to come up to that podium there and give us a name and address, and then explain to the board why the relief requested should be granted. Board members will very likely have some questions of the applicant, and then we'll invite anyone in the audience that cares to speak about the application to come up and do the same thing, give us name and address, and then talk about the application. After the public hearings are adjourned, we'll take a brief recess and reconvene in the back of the room to deliberate on tonight's matters and take care of any tabled matters or other unfinished business that the board may have. Members of the public are welcome at both parts of tonight's meeting, the public hearings and the deliberations. Although deliberations are time generally reserved for conversation amongst board members, board members with staff or with counsel. As I said, you're welcome to stay for both parts. If you choose not to, you don't, you don't have to, but if you choose not to, you can call tomorrow the zoning department, find out what action, if any, the board took on a particular item. Tonight's agenda is fairly long, so I think we'll be here a while, and I don't say that to discourage you from staying, I'm just telling you what, what we think because it is a beautiful night. In any event, I always like to point out every month, and I think the board members agree with me, that we think the town does a really good job of notifying neighbors that live in the area of an application, that the application has been submitted and it's going to be heard by this board. The town does that by sending postcards to neighbors if you live within a certain distance of the application, by posting the agenda on the website, posting it on the board, by having the applicant put signs at the property. These are all things done to make sure people are fully aware of their right to come in and speak about an application, and as I said, we think the system works very well, frankly, it helps us do our job. So with that being said, I'd ask everyone to rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the freedom of which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, thanks, folks. I see, did, did we have, Harold was in charge of putting on air conditioning before, is that what happened?
Before he left.
So we must not know where the switch is, I assume. In any event. May we have the first application there, Jim?
Yes, sir. Item number one, Jasmine Haganovich, 521 Cedarwood Terrace, Rochester, New York, 14609. Request an area variance from chapter 250, article 5-51F of the code to allow the construction of a single-family residence with less setback than permitted at 2775 Penfield Row. The property is owned by Jasmine Haganovich and is zoned RA2, SBL number 141.01-1-15, application number 17Z-0018.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. The word for the night is think cool, keep cool, and the key words are IPA. In any case, mounted on the board is a site plan, a copy of which you should have in your hands because the town very graciously made seven copies on March 31st at the time that we refiled the application. If you don't have it, so be it. I'll try to be as clear as possible in explaining all those funny lines. Before I get to the, to the cartoon, I just want to give you an overview on the area variances that are being sought. One is the front yard minimum to reduce it from 50 feet to 36.01 feet. The rear yard to reduce the minimum from 30 feet to 20.0 feet. The parcel as deeded to the center, is, is deeded currently to the center line of Penfield Road, consisting of 0.453 acres, or 19,733 square feet. The developable, the developable parcel excluding the right-of-way, right, is 0.323 acres or 71% of the deeded parcel. That amounts to 14,066.36 square feet. Included on the site plan is an indication of the reservation of a sidewalk east abutting the south right-of-way line of Route 441, whose dimensions are 7 foot north-south by 171.5 to east-west. The ground surface dedicated to the septic tank field, right, per AEY, AEY Engineering, plans revision dated 10/115, right, and they, I believe, are on file with the town. And I also believe that they were approved by the Monroe County Department of Health. In any case, the land that's consumed by the leach field, right, are 80 by 65, which amounts to 5,200 square feet, all right, and an additional 1,200 square feet, giving us a total of 6,400 square feet or 0.147 acres. On-site vehicular circulation on the north amounts to 1665 square feet, on the west is 9 by 55, and on the south, 18 by 34. The open space that is landscapable area abutting the two-bedroom residence, two-car garage on the north is 30 by 28, which produces 840 square feet. Two on the east, 12 by 26, 312 square feet. Three on the south, 20 by 35 feet, producing a total of 1,852 square feet or 0.03, 0.33 The land that is occupied by the proposed residence, two-bedroom residence and two-car garage, consists of 26 by 30 for the house, 22 by 22 for the garage, right? Those two yield 1264 square feet or 0.029 acres. Therefore, deducting all of that stuff from the land surface available for agricultural production, amounts to 0.017 acres or 741 square feet. And it's by understanding that agricultural production is defined as that portion of land which is usable, right, for gain, in other words, for profit. And it would seem to infer that the land area dedicated to agricultural production, if it's anything other than hemp, right, has to be, has to be significant in order to be profitable for that sole purpose. The average surface slope running north to south is 8.5%, which poses some grading challenges, but also makes the aspect of a walkout basement on the south side very The lot has been a non-conforming lot since at least 1971, right? In 1971, and this is all trackable by deed, right, there was a 25-foot wide sliver of land that was added to the west property line in order to avoid, in order to avoid the west property line from intersecting the old barn that's on the frontage, which has been pegged to have been erected roughly in the mid-1920s by the town historian. So in any case, under the prior zoning ordinance, it was identified as a double-A zone, which I believe had a minimum three-acre lot requirement, right? The current zoning RA-2 indicates that the lot must be no less than two acres. So the land has had that, had that inherent difficulty or deficiency, right, for a long period of time. It is not one that the current owner generated by himself. Also, since I was privy to your conversation as you were talking about this case during the caucus, just to review briefly, the septic system, leach field, has been approved by Monroe County Health Department.
I may interrupt you for a moment. I think before you said you thought it was approved and not.
It is. I got the copies, I got the permit, everything is approved.
Okay.
And it's been approved by your last zoning board before that, but you guys never asked, and there was a, I feel a little discrimination about that. You just ordered like. You just ordered, like, Mr. Silnis' recommendations, along the other stuff.
Yeah, we're not picking you up on the microphone. If you want to talk, come on up and give your name and...
One if, one more.
Okay, but if you're going to do that, again, I'm going to ask you to come up and talk. That's okay. I just want to make sure people that are watching and the record captures what you're saying. All right, so just to be clear, Monroe County Department of Health has approved the septic?
Yes, it is.
Very good.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, in fact, I thought I'd written down, yeah, the plans were last revised by AEY Engineering, and dated 10/115.
Correct.
Right?
But initially tonight, you said you thought they were approved, and now, just a few moments ago, you said they were approved, and I was just, I want to clarify, that's all.
Right, very good.
I think we have.
Fine, thank you. Also, there was some discussion about stormwater drainage. At the last turn before we entered the stretch, I had submitted a preliminary stormwater analysis and proposed plan to the town engineer. In fact, on the site plan that I have before you, and one that should be in your hands, there's a footnote for an item in the southeast corner, which indicates a proposed dry well four feet in diameter. So, and the reason that no dry well was anticipated for the other two drainage swales is that the intensity of runoff was, in fact, less than pre-development. So, the last word again is with the town engineer, he has that study in his hands. I'm not really trying to test your eyesight, but there's a lot of small stuff on that piece of paper. If I go too fast... This is at one inch equals 10 feet, which is relatively large scale. This rectangle depicts the two-bedroom home, this depicts the attached two-car garage, this is the driveway that runs off of Route 441. This is access apron to the garage, this is a paved asphalt apron to the east that allows two cars to park on-site in addition to those that are parked in the garage. This is a pathway that provides access to the back, to the underside of this two-car garage. From this point west is the proposed Leach Field, and it depicts the extent of the Leach Field, including the 50% expandability feature that is required by the Monroe County Health Department. Bear in mind that when that time occurs, when that time occurs that requires expansion of the field to the limits shown on this cartoon, the existing barn has to come down. Otherwise, we can't extend leach lines to accommodate the total linear footage of the Leach Field laterals. This is somewhat outdated, and it shows the periphery of ArborVite as a screening device on the south and west property line. Those are really, they're not there. The owner, since this plan was done, has installed a wood picket fence on the frontage, the back, and the side of each property line, with a sizable gap anticipating the location of an entrance driveway from Penfield Road. So that's really the extent of my presentation at this point. I invite Mr. Haganovich to chip in.
Okay.
Hi, my name is Jasmine Haganovich, and I have just, as you can know this problem with the English, and that's making a lot of my problems with you and with everybody else, also with the neighbors. That's why I'm not welcome there. Nothing else matters, because they, with your help, does, like, you don't approve nothing I want, the price of property goes down, and one of particular neighbors will like to buy that, but for cheap, for nothing. And you guys helped them do that, because I can't build nothing. I didn't realize that there was so many codes in there when I bought it. I was happy with pre-existing, which was used by storage, fine. But I have Mr. Sewages, Mr. Morehouse, we are at a court, and this is not going to end just like that, because they deny that I can do anything with the property. So, one of my neighbors hoping it's going to come to 2,500, like what he was offering to buy it before. You guys assessed that property, town, from 2009 to 2013, there was a $44,000 tax on it. And it's zoned residential one. I have it here on the tax bill. I never knew till a month ago that this was residential. They always tell me, "non-conforming, pre-existing." When I start digging around the taxes, I says, "Why is this marked residential?" Well, it is residential. So by the codes before 1981, when you changed, the zoning board changed those zoning codes, it was almost perfect for building a lot, building a house. After you changed it, you created hardship, not me, Mr. Silnis, by buying it, as you say it, on that property, not on me. So I don't know what I did wrong here. I didn't do anything wrong by buying it. If you don't approve that as a building lot, which I have spent a lot of money on it, it's okay, it's my loss, my self-created hardship, as you call it. And what I can do with it, I'm going to ask the town with the court to buy it, or assess the price, what you assessed it. Now you assessed it at 22,000. Who else in that area has half acre that is assessed on 22, or it was assessed on 44,000? Nobody. So that, whatever it is created, that is created on a town's watch and with town's help. I heard last time, a couple of things which I didn't understand, by watching the videos and helped with friends, I understand them now. I heard Mr. Jovett, the neighbor on the south, complaining about the drainage. Well, when he built his driveway, which is eight foot higher than my property, but it was, his property was at the same line, water was drained west from my, to his property. Now, his property, which is on the backside, which is naturally lower than mine, no, his is higher than mine, because he graded. He could do whatever he wanted, nobody didn't ask him. What town was then? Whatever I do over there, I have the town on my neck. I understand people do their jobs, but what I can do with it? Nothing. Right? And I did, I tried to go by the law, by the codes, by whatever I do, and soon as I, whatever has happened tonight, well, two months from now, we have a court date, and if the court tells me, "Clean it up, move," it's not going to be enough for these people there, because they're going to say, "Oh, why he's going there? What he's got in the barn? What's he doing there?" They bet, some of them, not all of them. And some of, most of them are used by somebody who wants that property, but doesn't want to pay for it. And I say tonight, "Never is going to happen, never." That's all I can say. And I have, last time, particularly, I'm not picking on you, Mr. Silnis, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
But you was a leading voice in opposing that. And you believed, when one of neighbors, I don't know the name, says, "Oh, I seen the cars going down into his property." So I went to the fire station house three, which is on Penfield Road. It never happened. They said, "We never had the codes there." I went to the sheriffs, they can't give me the paperwork, because there goes public request, whatever, I don't know how to do it, but I can do it if I need to. Never to happen. They all talk about you on the way, or the cars going, and my property, it's a flat right there. And normally, common sense is if the car goes down, it will go on the end of the hill, which is the right side, so that same neighbor that claims the cars was on my side. So, there was a lot of stuff that you guys just take it for granted, and you deny me. I hope it's not going to be at this, tonight, like that. And also, I have my friend Bob, who he wants to say something if I can.
Well, hold on a second, we may have some questions for you at this point. Anybody have any questions for the applicant? I have some, but I want to...
No, go ahead.
Okay. Well, so, and I don't care which one of the two of you answer this, but you've already alluded to the fact that you've come in previously for a similar application, very similar, and it was denied. And by the way, I'll point out for the record, the vote was unanimous. It's not as if Andres was the only vote against it.
Yeah, I do.
So, what I would like you to explain is, what is different with tonight's application than the one that was denied a relatively short time ago?
Well, I hope I cleared that first, that was not true, the car goes down in that place. We got approved by Monroe County Health Department, which you never mentioned it before, or you didn't ask me for that. You was, you was having like a workshop on that side, and I was shocked, like, you decided, you voting out against that, never giving me a chance to say something. We was there sitting, me and Peter, for two hours, and after that, we come, we was waiting, we was hoping you were going to say, "No, that was it." And that's why. And we also downsized that, now that, what I answered is a little bit less, we downsized the house.
By two feet, right? Your application today is two, for a variance, two feet less than a year ago.
That's only possible, we can do it, yes.
Okay. Have you seen, either of you two, have you seen the written resolution denying the application last time?
I did not, but he might have seen it.
Well, let me read you a little bit from it, and ask you to address the issue. Previously, the board determined that granting the variance that you requested last time would create an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood, that the family residence constructed at that location would be out of character for the neighborhood. And I guess I'm asking you, what has changed, if anything, in that regard?
I don't know why, because you have a brand-new house just west of me, built like two months ago, on the side there was the old house, and they get permit to build a house at the same time I was denied to build a house.
Did they get a variance?
Yeah, they got the permit to build a new house.
Well, not a permit, but a variance.
They didn't need, they maybe need a little bit more, but they were a bigger lot. So I don't know why the new house would, I think it would just benefit the whole, everybody there. And also, you have so many buildings there that are same or closer to the road than mine, which is a neighbor right across street from me, there is a couple number of houses down road from me, so why my house will be different? Why would that be?
Right. Okay. I'm going to read you another aspect of the resolution that denied the application previously, that the board determined that the requested variance was substantial. Now, you've said tonight that you've changed one of the variance requests, I think the front one, by two feet.
Yes.
Okay. So tell me why you think that percentage of a variance request is not substantial.
Okay, if you go by the, before you changed the zoning code, before 1981...
Let me interrupt, when did you purchase the property?
I bought this property in 2014.
Okay.
Okay, so...
And did you have a lawyer when you bought the property?
I did have the lawyer.
Okay, go ahead.
And you changed the code on it.
Well, not this board, but the town did.
Okay, that town did, changed the code. So before they changed codes, there was shy about 400 square feet, which is the size of somebody's garage, of that requirement that was before 1981 to build a house. There was like 20,000, maybe a couple hundred more or less, square foot requirement to be buildable. Now, this is like 19,600 square foot now. So if somebody wanted to build a house before 1981, before the zoning code changed, it will be fine, right?
Right, but you purchased it in 2014 or whatever you said, well after 1981.
I know, but I'm trying to make the point that I did not create the hardship on that property.
Well, actually, another argument could be made that you did create the hardship when you purchased the property without knowing the zoning. That's what, the statute says self-created. And we can argue about the meaning of that, but you did purchase a property with zoning as it existed on the day you purchased it, and you had representation.
Okay, so then why the town does not recognize the pre-existing of that property?
Because there's nothing on it. It wasn't like a building was on it.
It was on it.
And that's called pre-existing.
It was the barn is still on it.
Well, that barn is still on it.
Barn is still there.
Okay, okay, all right, all right. Yeah.
There was a second barn.
Okay.
Let's have that correct.
Hold on, Bob.
If you're going to speak, you're going to have to wait your turn, okay? I rarely do what I just did, but please, wait your turn. All right, any more questions for the applicant? Okay. And you want to come back up and say something? Feel free.
Relative to the significance of the additional two feet of front yard setback, there are five properties in close proximity of this site. So I would classify it as the immediate neighborhood, because I posed the question to an individual in the planning department as to, how does one define a neighborhood? Well, there's no pat answer for that. The town of Penfield is a neighborhood. However, relative to the following addresses and the respective front yards, 2701, which is a barn, is plus or minus 18 feet south of the right-of-way. Number 2716 is plus or minus 42 feet. Number 2755, there are two frame buildings on that site, specifically that Bracolo Nursery site. The house on the east is 39 feet, plus or minus, the house on the west is 33 feet, plus or minus, and then the maternal grandmother, which sits across this road, number 2780, is plus or minus 37 feet. If you take the average of those four properties, it comes out to 33.8 feet. Again, those are in the immediate neighborhood, and I just offer that as additional data for you to ponder.
Can I ask him a question, Dan?
Sure.
Do you know how much land goes with all those properties?
I don't.
I mean, is it...
I don't. We're talking about...
Say, an acre, or two acres, or five acres, or 100 acres?
I'm sure that they're more than the, less than a half acre than 2775.
Okay, so I guess my point to you is, point well taken, and I understand what you said, but sometimes if you buy 100 acres, I'll use an example, okay? You don't put your home in the middle of 100 acres, you put it to the road. So possibly, there could have been a variance for that, okay, because of, well, I'm just giving you an opinion, that's why I asked you to tell me how many acres are on each of those properties that you said.
I can tell you, Joe, if you want to know.
Here, I think that what needs to be addressed is the issue of streetscape. Streetscape is generally the basis for determining quality of front yards, because it becomes part of the public domain. Whether you enter the property or just drive by it, you're very aware of the front wall of the house, the barn, whatever structures on that side.
How many of the properties that you mentioned, those buildings were pre-existing, non-conforming? Do you know that?
I don't know, I'm guessing that...
All of them?
I think, I believe that all of them preceded the 1981 ordinance.
So we're really... So we're really sort of comparing apples with oranges.
No, we're not. We're comparing reality, because it's real, what's there is real.
Absolutely. But how many properties in an area, as a percentage, how many of those properties that you just cited are close to the road, how many are far from the road? I mean, the area...
What's close and what's far? Can you define those? That's a relative term.
Well, that's one of the reasons you have setbacks.
Right.
That's right. And I fairly believe that one of the reasons you have setbacks, all right, is to maintain an integrity of streetscape, regardless of whether a lot is 500 feet deep.
Okay, any other questions for this gentleman? No?
Thank you for hearing me out.
You're welcome. Okay.
Does this guy want?
Well, is he, are you part of the applications, Kate?
He's my friend and...
No, I understand that. I just don't know if he's speaking as your representative or just as a citizen that wants to speak.
I can explain, and then you can choose to listen or not.
Oh, well, of course, we'll listen.
Listen either way.
I just, before, usually I invite anyone in the audience that wants to speak, once the application is done. But if you're telling me your testimony is part of the application, then go right ahead.
I can explain why I'm here, and then you can tell me if this is the appropriate time or not.
Go ahead and give us your name and address.
My name is Scott Cudell. I live at 200 Summit Drive in Brighton.
Okay.
Basically, Yasmin just called me as a friend and a character witness. I am not an attorney, I'm not an architect, I'm not involved in this field at all. What I can speak to is, I did become the G C for my own house in Brighton in 1996. And at that point, because of the war in Bosnia, Yasmin was forced to leave Europe, come to America. If the president knew about that, he probably wouldn't make him go back, but he's here, he's a very, very productive citizen, so I'm only speaking as a character witness. What I can tell you is, the work that he did on my property, the stonework, please come and take a look at 200 Summit Drive, it's astounding what he did. He's a craftsman, he's diligent, he's a hard worker. What I would encourage you to do, and it sounds like maybe this might be 11th hour, is if there are certain guidelines that you can give him on what he should do to come back and do this properly, then I can sit down with him, some other people who know him well can sit down with him and say, this is what the town of Brighton wants you to do. Maybe he missed that, maybe it's a little late. I hope it's not the 12th hour, I hope it's the 11th hour. So all I'm really doing is being a character witness and saying, this is somebody who really would be a good addition to Penfield, because he helped me build a house that I think was a good addition to Brighton.
Okay. Any questions?
Thank you. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
My name is Bob Green, and retired aerospace engineer. Jasmine's a good friend of mine. The house that he bought, or excuse me, the property he bought from Hank Vandermaal, I've known the property for years, I knew that it had all kinds of Corvette parts in it. I was interested in the property. And if I was interested in the property, it was for pre-existing use, because I would have just gone in there and continued the pre-existing use. Now, the pre-existing use has been determined, that it went on for a long period of time, and the town did nothing about it. And he could use it for pre-existing use, and the town has been against that. The people are against it across the street. Nobody wanted to buy this property. Nobody wanted to clean the property up. There was a barn that was three times the size of that little barn, if not bigger, probably four times, and several stories tall, that had collapsed on the property. Jasmine cleaned all of that up at his expense and hauled it away. He's gotten rid of all the overburden, brush, boulders, all the stuff that was there for years. Nobody else cared to take care of this piece of property. I let him step in front of me in line to buy the property, because I knew that he was gonna be a good custodian of that property. The people across the street don't like it, because it looked like God's little acre there. It was all overgrown trees, rubble. They didn't have to worry about a neighbor. The people behind him, nobody wanted to take care of it, nobody wanted to buy it. He bought it. His house, the roadscape, if he builds that house, would be no less attractive than the barn that was previously there, the giant barn that was built back in 1920s?
1920s.
1920s. Okay, people have come to you and said, cars go off the road, there's a lot of accidents. That is bull roar. I've been driving there, I built a house off a Canadega Road, I forgot to say. I live at 3055 Canadega Road in Massing. I built my own house out there on a farm. I redid the roof on my barn to save it. I've got a 200-year-old barn, okay? I've built other barns. It all looks good. Now, the issue you got there is that nobody wanted to take care of the property. You got somebody that wants to take care of your property. The town just let it go to hell. The property, no cars have gone off of that road, because I've been driving past there for 40 years. Okay, for 40 years, day and night, and sometimes late at night, because I worked in the aerospace business, defending all of you people, okay? Now, I wanna tell you, I'm wanting to defend him. He came over here to seek out a new life. That piece of property deserves to have life. This town deserves to be able to collect taxes on it legitimately and not just raise the price on a lot that is non-conforming. You people have let that piece of property pay for your salaries, okay? It was drawing far more money than it was worth. I could have bought that piece of property for $2,000. I know I could have. When it had died, okay? His wife didn't want the property, his son didn't want the property. I helped him load up a motor that was out in the field, because I'm the type of person that goes and, if a person's got a fallen-down barn, and it looks awful in my neighborhood, I go over there with my truck and tear the blocks down, and haul them to the landfill, and make the neighborhood look better. He's gonna make your neighborhood look better. You ought to do something for him. I'm sorry that I'm a little bit high-strung about this, but it really irks me that somebody's willing to do something for all of you, all of Penfield, make your town look better. And it isn't gonna take away from nothing, because there was a bad barn there. He's even willing, if he has to take and make his septic system better, he'll tear down the barn that's there. Thank you very much for your time.
Okay. Anybody else in the audience care to speak about this application? Come on up.
Hi, Matt Jewett, 2771 Penfield Road. I live, I guess, west and south around the backside. Couple things really, you've already referenced the previous application. I have obviously written letters and spoke at these previously, I think most of you were on the board at the time. My position hasn't changed. It's, as you said earlier, it's not fitting with the neighborhood, the setbacks are significant, and it is self-created. And it's, and you've again touched on some of these points, I'm not gonna waste everybody's time with it, but the self-created piece is important, that it was purchased in 2014 with the intent of storing business equipment on it. That was not allowed. Then it was gonna build a barn to put the business equipment in the barn, that's not allowed. And then it was gonna be a residence with all the setbacks that are now being various requested of you. So it's clear that at the time the property was purchased, there wasn't any due diligence done on purchasing the property, and that to me is the self-creation. A couple other points. First of all, I'm sorry you feel like your neighbors are against you, I really do. I do apologize for that. And it was never that intent. It's quite simply, it's not what the neighborhood has, it's not what the history is, it's not where it's set up, houses are not built that way. The new house, a couple houses over, was the house that burned down. Again, I think you guys were involved in some of the changes in the barn there. It was rebuilt, and again, I think it's nine acres or 12 acres, I can't remember, but it's significantly more. Again, meets the setbacks, and I think the variance was around the barn, not around the house. So it's interesting to listen here. You know, the driveway history, I can go over that if you want, but I don't know if it's really necessary. The water is a minor point, I don't think it's that big of a deal. It's 400 feet away from my house, not gonna flood my house, but it is something I'm concerned about getting more, but I don't know if that's a real big issue here. The issue really comes down to a very small lot with a home on it in that area, very significant variance requests, and it's just not fitting for the neighborhood.
Any questions?
Thank you.
I heard what you were saying about it not fitting into the character of the neighborhood. Is there anything that specifically affects your property?
It's, the issue's mainly on the property is quite honestly how it's being used now, and what I expect to get worse. And when you have 10 feet and 20 feet from property lines, it's almost as if it's in your yard. There's now a fence on the property, which has helped a little bit, but it doesn't block out the construction equipment that's there, the dump trucks coming and going, the debris that's around scaffold equipment, and it's clearly a business. And anybody that drives by can see that. One comment though, I didn't understand, there was a reference to cars coming and going. I will tell you, the cars that come and go are his. There's nothing going on there, I'm not sure what that issue is.
I think there is a reference to the last application about some cars running off the road or that sort of thing.
Yeah, it sounded like there was a lot of people in and out. That's not the case. I live right there, I would know that. There's, but you know, he owns two or three vehicles that park there, it's his friend parking there, there's no issue with that. It's really, it's a business operation. The house would be significantly smaller than anything else in the area, and it's gonna be 30 or 33, I don't remember the number, setback from the road. It's the only other houses that are like that, or barns that are like that, were built 100 years ago. I don't know the dates, I'm guessing. But that's the difference, that's the concern. If you go by a historical home right near the road, you understand the history of the old road that was there, not 441 today.
You mentioned that the existing use right now is part of the issue in terms of, you know, the trucks or debris or whatever happens to be. If that lot turned to a home, where it was a residential home where it was sitting, would that alleviate some of those concerns of the lot being used as it is now?
It would, it may, but I'll be honest with you, and I mean, this, disrespectfully, it's gonna sound horrible, but in the three years he's owned it, he hasn't listened to anything the town has said. Still using it for a business when he totally couldn't, for years. And we've called and talked about it, and we've been told, you don't have time to look into it. So in the way the house is being built and oriented, a garage in the walkout basement, it's pretty obvious what's gonna happen there. So I am making some assumptions, it's maybe not fair, but it's built on what I've seen for three years. So it's a concern. So I'm worried about the business, but even if you made that completely go away, it's still very significant variances that could have not been an issue if the questions were asked three years ago. And there was, I'm sorry, there was a question raised about nobody else wanted to buy it. I did make an offer at the time. I made an offer for $3,000, and they said no. And I said, fine. That's, to me, that was all it was worth, and that was all I was interested in spending on it. And I only did that because I figured they'd give it to anybody just to get rid of it. Then I also found out that there was some question about some environmental concerns. And before I was able to finish looking into that, which by the way, I have no idea if it's true, please don't take that as anything, I don't know if it's true, before I could look into that, I found out it was sold. So I did look at it, but it just, I wasn't gonna spend that much money on it.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else in the audience care to speak about it?
Yeah, can I speak back?
No. No, after everybody else has had a chance, we'll have you come back up briefly.
Hi, John McAluso, my wife Amy, live at 2783. We live next door to Jenny and her husband there. And I don't really have too much difficulty with anybody building a home that would fit the size of that, of a lot that would be appropriate. We wanted to build a 20 by 30 barn, and we only have 2.75 acres, and we can't do it. And that kinda puts this thing in a precarious position in my mind, that if he's able to build a house on a piece of property that is considerably smaller than, you know, what I have or what we have, then why wasn't it, why am I not able to build a barn? But it kinda says to me that it might be more about taxes. I have nothing against this gentleman, but from the get-go, he told me all he wanted to do is build a small barn there to store something inside of it. But now he wants to build a home, the house would be, I would assume, for maybe two people, but he also would have his equipment there. Where's he gonna put that? Where's the equipment gonna go?
I'll answer that.
It's there now.
I have those equipment.
All right, let's, go ahead and finish, and then he can come up and address.
I just don't see the, it won't fit into the landscape of the neighborhood. I kind of like our, the idea that our neighbors across the street have, that it should be more open than what it is. But it seems to me as though you would be doing a Lego thing, you know, putting all these little pieces together. It's up to you what you decide you're gonna do. But if I can't have a barn on a 2.75 acres, and I got this huge open field that has nothing in it, then why are you gonna put a house there that's gonna house somebody? And all I wanted to do was put my farm equipment in there, and you know, some of my other oddball stuff that you ever be putting a barn. But I don't see that as remedying the situation. Where is all this stuff gonna go on that little postage-sized piece of property? I'm sorry you bought that piece of property. It seems to me as though you got the short end of the stick here. But anyway, that's my stick.
Okay. Anyone else in the audience care to speak about this? Come on up.
I'd just like to know how far this house is gonna be.
Come on up, and give us your name, although I think we already have it. You went the long way to avoid being on TV for too long, huh?
All right, yeah, I'm Amy McAluso. I live at 2783 Penfield Road. We do have a couple concerns with water issues. We're the lot 1 and 2 Indian Creek subdivision, so you know, we do live in a higher water table there, so you know, he will be adding the septic to the area, so of course, we're gonna have more water. But you know, this parcel of land is so small that this house is gonna be right at ya. It's gonna be like right on the roadside. So my concern is, how tall is this house gonna be? Because you're mentioning it's gonna have an underground, and then is it gonna be a first floor, second floor? I haven't seen any plans of the property yet.
Okay.
And, you know, this is supposed to be what your pictures here represent. This is the contrary. This is how, you know, I thought that it was gonna be, the life that, you know, I'm gonna live in this house. But I'm just wondering, if you let him do this, is this gonna open up to the town? Well, everyone wants to sell a piece of property at their, you know, maybe an acre up front. How many people are gonna do this? How many houses are we gonna have in Penfield?
Can I, can I make a comment?
Yeah.
The idea of pre-existing non-conformance occurs throughout the town of Penfield. There are many, many homes, and the applicant did make the comment that prior to 1981, all of Penfield, most of Penfield was zoned half-acre development. He made the comment it was three acres, but it was incorrect. It was half-acre development. And the reason it went to higher acreage instead of lower acreage, or stayed the way it was, we knew there were gonna be no sanitary sewers in East Penfield probably in our lifetime. So the town board rezoned the properties in East Penfield to 1 and 2 acres. The 1 acres were the ones that were closer to sanitary sewers and would have the ability at some point in time to change over to a higher density. But there are several properties in East Penfield and throughout the town that are less than 2 acres, less than 1 acre, less than a half of acre. The pre-existing non-conformance comes into play because those are in place. Now, he bought this property, but if he didn't buy it, somebody would have bought it. There is value to every property in town, and somebody would have bought it if there's the possibility that they can comply with all the requirements for development, whether it be the sanitary sewer system, drainage, you know, it doesn't necessarily have to be setbacks, but setbacks are, if you can meet them, that's, you're trying to achieve that. But there are properties all over this town that have been developed over the last 30 years, 35 years, that are less than 2 acres, because they can meet that criteria through the county health department, through the drainage issues, all that business. So the pre-existing non-conformance is the fact that the lot is smaller. That's all it means. He talked about the use of pre-existing non-conforming. There is no pre-existing non-conforming use on that site anymore, because after a period of one year where it stops, it ends, and you can't continue on with that. So they can't do anything other than residential on that property.
Well, I never even knew it was ever residential. I always thought it was country, and as far as running a business out there, I didn't know it was commercial.
92% of the properties in Penfield are zoned residential. You can do certain things on them, like agricultural, you can build churches, schools, whatever the case be, housing, but it is zoned residential. That's the overlying district. Everything after that, whether it's agricultural, that's just, that's just an overlay use of the property, and that can change at any moment depending on the situation.[1785.58]
So is his property going to be residential plus commercial because?
No, it's strictly residential. They've lost, whatever that use was, and I don't know what it was, I don't ever remember it being commercial in any case, if it was pre-existing prior to our ordinance since 1962, we really didn't have an ordinance, so people pretty much did what they wanted to, particularly out in East Penfield because there was no, you know, we didn't have people going out there every day looking at things. But in 1981, if you had a pre-existing non-conforming use and you continue to do it, and there are many of them in town as you know, you're okay. But the second you stop for a period of one year or more, you lose that ability to continue that business on the site. So it reverts back to its residential setting, which is, you know, single-family residential.
But I never knew it was residential because it was nothing.
It's always been residential.
That no one has ever lived there 32 years.
It doesn't matter, it's zoned for residential use. It's not zoned to put a business there, it's not zoned to put a hospital there or anything of that nature. It's zoned for single-family residential, as all the properties around you are.
So whenever, originally the previous owners had that too.
They may have been running a business on the site, I don't know, but if they were, they were probably doing it as a pre-existing non-conforming business, which carried over possibly beyond 1981, but the second they stopped running that business and it ended for a period of one year or more, they lost the right to use that for whatever it is they were using it for.
Okay, I just want to come and state.
Yeah, I mean, I'm sure a lot of people don't understand that process and that concept, but it is zoned for residential purposes. It's not zoned for whatever's going on there and I don't know what that is at this point in time. It sounds like he was trying initially to put a business on the site, but that's not going to be.
That's what it initially was only for.
Yeah, it's not going to be that. It can't be that.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep.
All right. Anyone else in the audience? No? Okay, you want to come back up?
Yeah, I got to answer a couple of things. Yes, I do have a compact tractor with a loader and a backhoe there, which is, Mr. Jewitt's got about the same size, the guy across the street has the same size. Answer from the town is they have a home there, okay? I, they can say it if I did, I never moved those equipments from that property. I'm using it there. I had a lot of stumps there. I dig them out, even I got written up by Mr. Suwages for a couple of those stumps because there was a number of the walnut trees there, I cut them. And I go there only, I have time after two jobs. So some, I didn't go there less four days, no time. I love to go, but I don't have time. Only time I have go there at night. And with those neighbors there, if I go at night, sometime I stay late, they're going to call police, what I do over there, even it's mine. I got the electric there, that's probably what start all these here. And I use those, what I have there equipments, only at that property and once I finish with it, it's not going to be there. If I build a house, I won't have a room for it because the septic will take half of the lot. So it won't be there, I don't need it. And by the way, the relative of Mr. Jewitt's wife is does all the excavating for me when I need it on my business site. I have the place to move all those stones that I have there now at the same property just on the other side of the town, which is on, just on the, over the Grandander Parkway in Walworth. So that's not issue, all the stuff I there. What I have there is the stones, couple bricks, maybe, let's say 100, 200. I intend to build, because I'm builder, I want to build a little stone wall there, I want to build a patio so I can sit down. I was told by the town, no you can't. Why I can't, I mean, the town inspector can confirm that. Why I can't build the steps? Because the road is like, on the outside of the barn is about seven, eight feet higher. I want to have a lot of steps going down from the barn that I don't go all the way around. No, you can't because it's not conforming. So whatever I tried to do, I couldn't do it and it's there. And I did continue, sorry, I'm not pointing at you, but I did continue the pre-existing use and I have the truck there with the snowplow, which I clean the driveway every winter. I had the other truck, Mr. Jewitt's complained about it, was my business truck with the snowplow. I have it, I keep it there, I clean the driveway because sometime town pushed a lot of snow down there and I just want to, it's mine, I can do it, right? Can clean my driveway.
You can't, you cannot run a commercial operation off of residential.
I don't.
If, and it sounds to me like you were trying to obtain building permits to do some work on the site, but you've got to get an approval from this board and you've got to get an approval from the planning board in order to.
Oh, there was just fixing the foundation, it had a couple holes in the foundation, the stone, and I did that. I had the permit for that.
But it's for the pre-existing non-conforming use. You're not entitled to use what the prior owner did because it ended a long time before you got.
No, it didn't. It didn't end it. Well, I mean, I got the witnesses.
All right, you know what, we're going far afield here.
Yeah, we don't want to go there, that's different issue.
Let me ask you this, there was a question from another witness about the height of the proposed residence. Can you answer that? Somebody?
Yeah, he didn't answer that. But I, it won't be any of the equipments there, any of the rubbles won't be there if I build a house.
Right.
And that's no question about it.
Okay, well, we don't think we ever doubted that.
Town code mandates the maximum height of a dwelling at 35 feet, right? And the 35 feet is taken from the average grade, right, to either the bed height to the roof or to the ridge line, right? Doing a two-story house with a walkout basement on one of its four sides can easily comply with the regs. I don't know what else to tell you.
From the high side, how high would it be from the road?
From the road, it would be.
Approximately.
Nine, 18, 28, 27 feet.
Okay, 27. Okay. Yeah, thank you. All right. Anybody else in the audience? No? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's one down.
Application number two, Nicholas Manu, 52 Kevin Drive, Rochester, New York, 14625. Request a conditional use permit under chapter 250, article 13-3 and chapter 250, article 5-56C of the code. Tulau Restaurant, 2505 Broncroft Boulevard. Property is owned by the Cavalry Church of Rochester, Inc. and is zoned limited business. SBL number 123.07-2-47.1. Application number 17Z-0023.
Good evening. How's everybody today?
Good.
My name is Nicholas Manu. I've lived at 52 Kevin Drive for, Kevin Drive for 27 years. My kids went through high school, Penfield High School. I'm asking to rent 1,000 square feet at 2505 Broncroft Boulevard. The plaza is owned by Cavalry Chapel Rochester. I've been in the restaurant business since I was 15 years old, my father, and I've owned a restaurant at East Rochester and I'm thinking of going back again. And I'm at something closer to home. So it's only about like five minutes away from my house. I'm asking for 10:30 until nine o'clock, Monday through Friday. Most holidays will be closed.
I'm sorry, did you say Monday through Friday or Sunday?
Did I say that? I'm nervous, Monday through Sunday.
Every day, in other words.
Every day.
Okay.
And I don't have to do nothing there. It's 1,000 square feet. The only thing we have to do is go through the town and go through all the things that we need to do to put a little submarine restaurant in there.
Okay. Okay, yeah. Well, okay, then describe what kind of kitchen you're going to have there.
Well, it's going to be open kitchen. Depending on how much we can do, might put a seven-foot hood in there. We're going to have a grill in there. Most of it's going to be refrigeration, salads, cold stuff. We'll put some hot stuff, dinners and some like submarine sandwiches and so on. Once in a while we'll do specials, lunches, we'll have some soups in the wintertime, summertime salads, but mostly it's going to be cold stuff.
And is this where the old barber shop was? Am I correct?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yes.
So, did you receive this from the Monroe County Development Review Committee?
I did not, no.
Okay. Why don't we give him a copy? How's that? Well, have this copy. Have you got a copy? Yeah, because I kind of yelled at.
I don't have one to give him, but I certainly will make a copy for him.
Okay, yeah, why don't you make a copy for him? Mike, give me that back because I want to.
2505, yeah.
And before then we go over this, I want you to just take a quick glance at it.
There you go.
Okay.
Why don't you identify the document, Joe, so he knows.
Okay, this is from the project review report from the Monroe County Development Review Committee and it's an attachment to file PN17, which is yours. And it talks about backflow preventers, engineers' reports. It's May 16, 2017.
All right.
Okay? And I'm just bringing this to your attention. You said you ran a restaurant before.
Right.
So you obviously know about ANSL systems.
Absolutely.
Okay, then you know about backflow preventers if you need it.
Right.
Okay, so I guess what I'm saying to you is that you're going to have to check on all of these things before you open your restaurant.
Absolutely.
Or somebody else will shut you down.
Absolutely.
Okay, not us.
Well, my first step is here. This is our first step.
Okay. I'm just making you aware of it because we received it.
Yeah, no problem at all.
And I wanted you to have it.
Well, thank you. I didn't receive nothing like that. Well, thank you for showing me.
You're welcome.
And I'll double-check with the Department of Planning and Development.
Okay. Okay, now, I guess you talked about outside tabling.
Right.
Okay? Where exactly would the outside tabling be?
There's 20 feet right between the tailor shop and the new bike shop that just opened up, the recycling. So just a couple tables, maybe two or maybe three depending if the third one will fit right there, you know?
Are you talking about around the corner or on the corner?
No, just right in front of the store.
Well, you, right directly in front of your store, you have steps, correct?
No, it's like a little patio and then you've got the steps.
Yeah, okay, but I mean, it's, how wide is that patio?
Probably a good eight to 10 feet.
Okay, and you're going to put it, and that's a walkway? That's to get from your store to the bike store?
Right.
To the restaurant?
Right.
Okay? Now, if you put a table in there, will people have to walk out into the parking lot in order to get around it?
The table will be just by the window and it's only going to sit two or three seats, just like you're in the backyard of your house or anything like that, you know, enjoying a drink.
You said two or three tables.
Right.
Six to nine chairs.
Right.
I mean, nine chairs. And how big is your, is the frontage of your piece of property that you're renting?
20 feet.
Okay, so in 20 feet, you're going to stick six to nine tables, or two to three tables?
Two to three tables.
And six to nine chairs and not block anything off?
Probably, let's say if I put two tables in there, right, the most chairs I'll need is about six chairs. If I put three tables in there, the most I'll need is nine chairs.
Okay, and my question to you is, are you saying to me that you're not going to block off, you have 20-foot frontage.
Right.
In 20-foot of frontage, you put three tables, okay, you're not going to block that sidewalk?
I don't think so. You know, if it's a problem, then I'll go down to two tables or if it's a problem, I'll go to one table.
Okay, are you going to have umbrellas on these tables?
No, because there's no reason to have it because there's, yeah.
And how about the tables and the chairs? When are you going to have them out? Is there certain dates that you're going to have them out? Say just in the summertime, obviously.
Right.
From what date to what date?
Well, it'll be there from 10:30 in the morning until nine o'clock at night when we close.
No, like June, July, August? I mean, I don't think it'd be there December, January, right?
If the weather's good, if the weather's good in March, we'll ask for March. That's where I'm here for, to get, you know.
March.
If the weather's good in February, we'll put them in there so the people can enjoy.
Usually, you ask us for June, July, August. You want to be able to put them up anytime as weather permits. So you want them year-round?
Exactly, thank you.
You're welcome.
Now, the gentleman right here has come to Giants Family Restaurant on Park Avenue and I've worked there for many years. Peter Giants is a friend of mine.
Yep.
And like him, you know, if February is a nice day, he takes the tables out there and so on, you know? So, yes, you are right. I'm asking you, if the weather's good in February, I can put them on in February.
Good. That's the point I'm trying to get to.
Thank you.
You have to ask us and then we grant it or deny it.
Well, I need a little help, like I say, you know?
And that's why I'm here to help you.
Very good, thank you.
Okay, that's why I'm doing this. I give you that paper or I'm asking these questions.
Okay.
It's not to slip you up, it's to help you, okay? So, don't be nervous.
I'm good in the kitchen. This is my first time around here.
I know, I'm sure, but don't, you know.
No problem.
All right, so now, what kind of signage do you want?
All it is, is there's like a six-foot, everybody has the same.
Rectangle on your building?
Right, like the Broncroft Family Restaurant has.
Yep.
Like the cycling and the bicycle has a different kind of, you know, it's different kind, but the rest is green, all green and so on.
Different name, right, but there's little rectangles up there, you're going to stay within that signage area?
Exactly, yes.
So that would be within our code.
Yes.
And that's the point that I'm trying to get to.
It is.
Now, how about a, I know that sign out there, the monument sign, you have a right to a freestanding sign too.
Right.
But is your name going to be on that one that's out there?
Well, it's not, the name's going to be on there for, like by the road, you know, we can put it on and a lot of times, you know, people drive through and the plaza allows it for.
Yeah, right.
So, yes.
It's just kind of a little beat up if you would maybe talk to the.
I think you're talking about two different signs.
Which ones?
I think you're talking about putting a sign out by the road to identify your business.
Right.
He's referring to the freestanding green sign that's over by the gas station that's kind of fallen into a state of disrepair.
I'm sorry, thank you for clearing that. No, I'm not going to put a sign there, no.
Oh, okay.
Just on the building, in front of my.
All right, so no freestanding sign then as well?
Thank you.
No freestanding.
No freestanding sign.
Okay, very good. Let's see. Yeah, was there operation? You kind of seem to have answered all the other questions in your, in your letter to us. The first thing, and the last thing I want to ask you is, what is the name of your business and why don't you plug it a little bit here? You know, you're going to.
Well, this is, like I said, this is the first step. Tomorrow is my second step. I'm meeting with the chapel, and Pastor Jeff, and their lawyers and so on. So after we do that, then, you know, we'll bring the name out and so on.
Oh, okay. You can come back, I guess, but you don't have to. You know, if you knew your name...
No, it sounds like it might be a secret.
It is a secret, yes.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I apologize, trying to break the secret.
If I have to come back to this, I'll tell you the name right now.
No, as far as I'm concerned, you don't have to come back.
You're not enjoying yourself?
Yeah.
Well, you know, like I said, this is my, this is not my type.
Yeah, you don't have to answer them.
Yeah, I'm good in the kitchen.
Let me ask you this question, because I don't live far from there, and I've seen that plaza a number of times on Sunday mornings.
Packed.
Right, so let's say you're having a really good Sunday morning at your restaurant, you have all those two or three tables, nine, six or nine people on the sidewalk, how many people are you hoping to have inside the restaurant?
No more than seven, eight tables, depending, you know?
Okay.
A lot of times...
And how many sitting at each table, around?
There's gonna be like 32 chairs in there.
All right, and how many employees on that, at that moment, would you say, three, four?
On that Sunday morning, probably, you know, my business that I wanna put there, like a sub-business there?
Right.
It's not gonna be really busy. The businesses for the breakfast, my friend Dennis, that owns the Browncroft Family Restaurant?
Yeah.
Mine will be mostly like takeouts and maybe deliveries or pickups or anything like that. My business will be Monday through Friday at lunch hours, and during the nighttime, people coming in, where the plaza is mostly like vacant there, because the restaurant closes at 2 o'clock, the church has nothing doing. On Sunday, you know, the church is packed over there. You're talking about 250, 300 members there, you know?
Right, and that's why I ask. I just wanna make sure that there, there's enough parking there at times when all of those businesses and the church?
Right.
Are up and running at, let's say, full capacity?
Right.
Are you, have you talked with your landlord about any dedicated spots to your business? Has that conversation come up at all?
Mainly our employees and myself will be parking in the back?
In the back?
Like everybody else, and leaving the front for all the customers for the plaza.
All right, let me ask Mr. Costello a question. Have we had, have there, given Browncroft Family Restaurant and the church, have there been any issues there with the parking lot being over capacity?
I don't think we've had any problem. I think the church, the parishioners of the church are parking in the main body of the parking lot, sort of to the east of you.
Exactly, right.
You're parking to the west portion, as was the restaurant and their patrons.
All right.
Plus, if you know that area, if you go across from Fast Drag, or next to the bank over there, there's plenty of space over there, a lot of parking places over there. And like Mr. Costello says, most of the people that go to the chapel there, they park on that side of the road. But again, you're right, on Sunday over there, if you go there, you will not find a parking place near, you know, like where the restaurant is, where the sub, where I'm gonna be in. And the other thing is that on Sundays, the bicycle place is closed. So there's a little relief from there, you know?
Okay. Any other questions?
I just have one, quickly.
Okay.
Along with your two or three tables for the outdoor dining, you're gonna have a trash container out there too?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Any other questions?
Well, actually, that was my question, but I have another one too. Were you planning on any music or...
No music at all.
Quiet, okay.
Yeah?
Great.
On the trash issue, just before we leave that, are you going to have a dumpster? Are you gonna have a tote, or how are you handling your trash?
Dumpster's gonna be in the back with outlets. We're gonna, you know, make a contract with one of the dumpsters to pick up the cardboard and to pick up the trash.
Okay. Anyone in the audience care to speak about this? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, have a good day.
Two.
Application number three, Paul Brent, 50 Tall Tree Lane, Penfield, New York, 14526. Requesting revariance from the approved subdivision requirements to allow an addition with less than 10 feet between residents at 50 Tall Tree Lane. The property is owned by Faith and Paul Brent, and is zone R-1-15. SBL number 109.03-1-147. Application number 17Z-0025.
Good evening. I'm Randy Peacock, and I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of the Barrents with regard to their request. First of all, let me give you a little bit of history. Their contractor had come into the town in November with a site plan and met with Tom Alexander in the zoning office for, to discuss this addition. At that time, he was given the instructions, it's fine, this is a small clearance or a small lot subdivision, and you would be okay to, as long as you meet the fire separation distance of five feet that's required by the building code from their property line, they would be, wouldn't be any issues with any zoning. So we proceeded to do the drawings and, for this project, and submit them for the building permit. Just so you understand, it was only after the building permit was issued that the contractor then received a phone call about an hour and a half later, saying, wait a minute, we've got a problem, this doesn't meet the town zoning ordinance. So that kinda was the starting point of this. Let me give you a little bit of explanation. Faith Ann Barrent has a medical condition. I have a letter I can share with you from her physicians, her chiropractor, that explains the condition. I have four copies of it, I'd be happy to share with you. So the initial impetus to the change to the house was to modify the master bedroom bath to create a spot to put a large Jacuzzi tub in for her use in association with her medical condition. I'm sure you're aware, this is a subdivision that was, I believe it's early 80s, late 70s, early 80s, it was a little experiment in tiny lots and big open space, shared open space. So you have a situation where you have quite small lots, and in most instances, the buildings sit close to the property lines. In the current situation that we have here, their house sits about 7.6 feet, I believe, from the existing property line. The adjacent neighbor's house is almost right on the property line. You have a site plan that I had prepared for that. So going back to the medical condition that we looked at, a way to modify the existing interior of the building, what we did is remove two small closets and enlarge the bathroom so that we could fit that Jacuzzi tub into the bathroom and make a couple other modifications with a little bit larger double vanity within that space. And then, because we had eliminated the closets, these houses had very small closets to begin with, we were proposing to build a little bump on the back of the house, it's eight feet deep and 10 foot 7 inches wide, that would accommodate that master closet. We don't believe that this addition in any way is detrimental to the neighborhood, because the neighbors already enjoy the same rights. They have houses that sit almost on the property line, as example, the house immediately adjacent to this. The addition does meet that five-foot requirement from the property line that the New York State Building Code requires for fire separation distance. There is a small piece of the overhang on the addition which protrudes beyond that five-foot proper, or fire separation distance, which the code permits, the building, New York State Building Code permits, as long as it's built with fire-resistant materials to prevent the spread of fire from across the property lines. On the site plan that was provided, I realized just a couple hours ago that I had made an error. I believe I show a 6.8-foot setback off of the property line. In just double-checking my notes today and looking at the thing, what I discovered was it's actually 5 foot 4 inches. So I apologize for that error, it was not an intentional mistake. So the corner of that building sits 5 foot 4 inches from the property line. The drawings are accurate, that five-foot fire separation distance setback on there is accurate. As I said, I don't think that, in my humble opinion, given that all of the houses in this neighborhood sit very close to their property lines, that this is in any way a detriment to the neighborhood. You would have to say that all the rest of the houses in the neighborhood caused the same issue. We're asking for what we feel to be the minimum necessary in terms of the size of the closet. We carefully measured all of the storage and hanging clothing that the family has, and that closet is sized to accommodate that. We can't really push the closet over any closer or farther away from the property line, because there is currently a three-season sunroom on the back of the house, and we've kept, I think it's approximately two feet between the addition wall and the three-season room, so that we can actually get in there to do maintenance, do construction, and have that, and build this. I think we probably talked enough about it already. If you have any questions, it might be the easier way to approach that.
Andres, if you don't mind, I just wanna...
No, go ahead.
Have you seen the letter from the neighbor?
I have not, but I understand that they've had some conversation with the neighbor.
Yeah, why don't you take this, and take a look at it, just so you have it, and then Andres will start with some questions.
Sure.
If you keyed up the concept...
Do you have any seconds to read this?
You keyed up the concept of getting to, between the patio and the proposed addition for maintenance and things like that, how would you anticipate being able to get to the back of the yard with, if you ever needed to do maintenance in the back of the yard with only five, was it 5.4 feet or...
It's perfectly possible to walk through 5.4 feet. I mean, I'm not sure what kind of maintenance you're thinking of.
Well, let's say you have a shed that's six foot by 8.1, how would you get that into the back? Or put it forward?
I guess you would build it back there piece by piece. I mean, you can carry two-by-fours back in there.
Okay.
There is a large, shared public green space behind all of these houses.
Correct.
If you look at an aerial view of it, at one end, it appears that there's an access point that you could get into there. So I think all of those houses can be accessed from that, that public, shared public space as well.
I'm not sure if that's public space or if that's just utility easement, that might be easements for that kind of stuff, but I know...
Well, it's a giant green space.
Correct.
So, I mean, it's...
In the center, yes.
There's more than utility easements in there.
Well, no, okay, either way.
I mean, that's, from my understanding, in the 80s, 70s, 80s, this was like...
84.
84, right, this was an experiment in, in a zoning development, where you clustered the houses tight together, and then you created a big shared green space that, you know, everybody had access to.
Right, and so that's why they pushed, you know, and typically what they do is they push one house to one edge of the sides, then you still had access to get to the back of the yard in case you ever needed to. And the one fear is...
If I could reiterate, I mean, we already have 7.6 feet setback from the property line to the existing house, and we're asking for 5.4 feet, or, sorry, 5 foot 4 would be 5.33. So I'm reducing that by 1 foot 6 inches from what it currently is.
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct. And so one of the fears is, in terms of, you know, if you do this on this side, and the neighbors start doing everywhere, do all the houses now start to get even tighter? And I think part of the concept was this, with the houses being so close, at what point do you say enough is enough for distance to your neighbors and those kind of things? And looking at the plans, I mean, is there a way that this, the depth of the closet could be less? So then it didn't stick out as far...
It'll change it by mere inches, just because of the way the angle, because of the angle that it's at.
Right.
Changing the depth, if I came back a foot, it might change it by two or three inches.
But literally, that's what we're talking about here, is inches, because when you look at, you know, a house that's 10 foot from the next-door neighbor's house, I mean, this is, everything's scaled a lot differently. So we are talking inches for a lot of these variances here, as opposed to a house that's 14 or 15 foot from your neighbors, and then they have 15 foot, now you're 30 foot apart. It's a different scale of homes that we're talking here, and that's why it gets a little tight.
So, as I said before, we placed it in a manner which we felt gave us the amount of closet space we needed and kept that distance, and we didn't push it to the corner, we pulled it off the corner.
Right.
So it doesn't, it doesn't sit over to that corner, and the effort there was to solve that problem, or, you know, make it as least of an issue coming close to that. The, you know, once again, I'll go back, this was designed based on the town zoning official saying, you're fine, just respect the New York State 5-foot fire separation distance, and you, there's no issue with this. So when this was designed, it was done per what the person in the zoning department said we should do, which was maintain that 5-foot fire separation distance.
But then you have to have a 10-foot from the house next door.
The New York State Building Code doesn't say that.
Not Building Code, but this, I believe this is owned this way for this whole development.
Correct.
It's not, it's not just this one house.
Correct. But, but when that information was requested from the town, it was not provided in that manner. They said, maintain the 5-foot fire separation distance, and this is fine.
Yeah, we get that, but as we talked about earlier...
I understand.
You and your client are charged with knowing what the rules are.
Correct.
So I get...
And one of the ways you find that out is you come to the people who know, who are the...
One of the ways.
Officers in the town.
But we're all human beings, and we make errors sometimes, so...
5 foot 4 and 6 foot 8.
Professionals rely upon, on their own work.
I understand that.
But they did catch it before you started, which is probably a good thing.
That's true.
Because it's always better to catch it beforehand. What's, is there anything unique about this lot compared to the other lots in the neighborhood? You know, if you had built an addition off the back of, let's say, go three doors down, what would be different?
This lot is a little bit narrower than other ones, because it's a tighter piece of the pie.
Okay.
There are other lots in the neighborhood that are wider pieces of pie, and that, in that particular instance, that, you know, makes it a little bit tighter, the property line on that side. I can guarantee you, there are other properties in this subdivision where there is less than 10 feet between houses. I'd be happy to, I just was, had the Google Earth overview of the neighborhood on my phone just minutes ago, and you can look down and see there are some houses that are much closer together than 10 feet, which you can do, once again, not under the Penfield zoning ordinance, but under the state building code, if the fire rating of the exterior wall of the house is adequate to permit.
Right, you only have to be 5 foot from the property line, correct?
You only have to be 5 foot from the property line under the building code?
Correct.
If the wall is combustible.
If the wall's...
Right, yeah. I can go closer if I make a wall that has a fire rating.
Correct. So we said, this lot's, you know, the pie shape is one of the, you know, limiting factors here, where, actually, I think there's 13 lots in the interior circle that are all pie-shaped, and there's 36 others that aren't, or something like that.
Correct, yeah.
So a lot of them are rectangle shapes and not necessarily pie shapes.
Yeah.
So that's one of the limiting factors.
And, you know, that's, the nice part of that is if it was a rectangle shape and we came off the back of the house, we're not gonna be losing that space due to the angle of the lot, lot line, as opposed to the house.
Correct, okay. That's all I have right now.
I certainly understand the need based upon the chiropractor's letter for the tub, but let me just ask you this, after this is done, is there gonna be more closet space than exists now?
There is, because they have storage that's in one of the bedrooms, and they'd like to use the bedroom, so there's, the closet space in that master bedroom right now is, I think, 3 and 1/2 feet and 3 and 1/2 feet, is 7 feet in the master bedroom space. But they also have clothing stored on racks in one of the bedrooms, because they have such tiny closets in there. You know, I think American lifestyle has changed from 1984 to today, we tend to own more clothes even than we did then. And so the intent here is to provide a comfortable amount of space for them to fit all of their clothing.
Okay.
Oh, go ahead.
No, I'm done.
Have they explored any kind of closet organization systems that make use of...
We'll probably do that in here, to be honest with you, within this. You know, it's, it doesn't increase significantly the amount of storage that you have with a closet organization system. I mean, you can go too high or something like that, but with longer clothing, like dresses and slacks, you still need to have that taller hanging space. So...
So there's no way they could build something onto the home over here where you have more area and more setback between the two properties? I mean, obviously, it's not the bedroom area.
Correct.
But it is an area that provides...
There's the bathroom along that, and then there's another bedroom on the front that already has a closet space, and I don't think adding onto that side, you're gonna run into that same issue of coming over close to that, to that property line again.
Well, you could, you could have quite a bit of distance between the addition and the house.
Well, it's a master bedroom, it's the master bedroom, it has the attached bath. The intent is to have a closet off of the master bedroom, in the standard manner that most Americans have their bathroom and bedroom and closet set up.
Have you approached the neighbor that's closest impact?
I believe there, that Faith Ann did have some discussions with the neighbor that was closest.
Are they in approval?
I think she's here tonight to oppose this. I don't, I have not personally had any discussions with her, I'm sure we'll hear from them in a minute.
Okay. Is it fair to say that the primary motivate, the primary motivation for this is the health issue and the tub?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, we had to change the bathroom, 'cause, to put, to fit this tub in?
Right.
-that will fit in there.
Right.
Changing that bathroom to get the space to do that meant you lost those existing closets.
Okay.
And so we were looking to make up the closets, we thought we had a, what was a very simple approach to it, which is the little bump out on the back, a very inexpensive small addition, creates the closet space, and everybody's happy.
Okay. Anyone, any other questions from the board? All right, anyone in the audience?
I can notice that you're casting your head around, is there anyone who can see it, see what it looks like?
Uh-
We have this, we have, yeah.
I don't know what, what paper you're talking about, but why don't you, does anybody want to come up and talk?
No, that's not good.
Okay.
Okay, can I answer? I'd be happy to answer that question.
Go ahead, we're really supposed to have you come up and identify yourself, so that the record is clear, so why don't you come up and do that, and then you can answer her question.
I'm Nancy O'Donoghue, I live at 38 Tall Tree Drive, and I, our closets are not really that small, the master bedroom has a complete walk-in closet, so I don't know why they're saying that the closets are small.
Okay, and you want to know what it's going to look like from the road as well?
I'd like to know what it's going to look like from the road.
Okay.
Show that, or-
Here, give it to her.
There's a better plan coming down, that's within the application. It's probably not something that you'd even see from the road.
Correct.
Why don't you, why don't you come on up and answer her question about-
I'd be happy, you can't, you can't see it from the road. This is the roadside up here.
Yeah, but it goes in like that.
Well, if you're coming, if you're coming around the corner, you're going to see a little tiny side of it right there, and that's what it looks like, it's just a little piece that bumps out there.
That's bumping out a lot.
No, it's bumping out 8 feet.
That's a, that's a lot of space.
I just had a question for Nancy.
Yes.
Is your house the same plan as the one, as 50 Tall Tree?
I don't know. I can't tell by seeing that, I don't know what his floor plan is, but all of the houses in the master bedroom have walk-in closets.
Thank you.
Also, it's hard to get into the backyards, because there's a whole thing of rocks that prevent you from getting into the back of the yards, there are those big boulders. And I was just wondering, they do have an addition in the back of this house, have they looked into maybe adding, you know, making, going out the back instead of maybe making that porch a little smaller, or something like that, so they don't have to interfere with the neighbors? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Would you like to answer that one?
Sure.
She's talking about the glass thing in the back.
So, let me just, I've been in the house, there is not a walk-in closet in this house. If you look on the floor plan that I provided, there's the ghosted in, there's dash lines which indicate there's 2 closets that flank a passageway from the bedroom to the bathroom. So that's not considered to be a walk-in closet. Might be considered to be a walk-through closet, but there are doors on both sides of them. I don't know what other floor plans were built there, so I really can't comment on what else was there. They don't want to tear down the solar, or change the glass-enclosed sunroom, because those rooms are built as a system. You can't simply change a piece of it. The roofs are large panels, the walls are large panels, it's very complicated to take them apart and modify them to make them smaller. So we tried to avoid doing that and stay away from taking that down at the present time. There was a discussion about whether 8 feet is a lot or a little, I personally look at the scale of the house, it's an 8 by 10, it's adding 80 square feet to the house, we don't think that that's a, my opinion is that that is not a significant addition to that house. I also don't think that this has an impact on the neighbor's house, the neighbor's house sits on the property line. They already don't have access to their backyard on that side, I don't know whether, you know, what the intent is of the concern about getting into the Burnts' backyard, the Burnts are happy that they will be able to do whatever they need to do in terms of maintenance or future construction, or, you know, anything like that, by accessing that space through that 5-foot 4 inches that's left.
Anyone else in the audience care to speak about this?
This one or this one?
Your choice.
Either one.
Hi, I'm Ellen Etkin, E-T-K-I-N, I live at 48 Tall Tree, I'm part of the pie. That's, I get a laugh on that, anyway.
Maybe an hour ago.
Yeah. Yeah, I was laughing then. I'm not saying I'm opposed to it, I just want some things cleared up.
Okay.
Okay, they're good, they're great neighbors. There's 10-foot clearance, I'm just wondering, is that the foundation?
Yes.
The siding? The overhang?
Foundation.
Okay, so it doesn't mean that much to me, because when you, you know, that's the starting point, okay. I was wondering, how, will it affect in any way my property value whenever, like, we sell taxes, anything like that? Yeah, okay. Now, I was going to ask, does this set a precedent for the neighborhood, but one of the gentlemen back there said from Google Earth, that it looked like there were some already within, oh, okay.
That's the house right there.
Yeah.
So that, you're-
That's us.
That's you.
See how tight that is, babe?
But see these, like, even in, right in there, and those.
Okay, can I show them this?
Sure, yeah.
Can I show you something?
Sure.
This is the Google Earth-
Oh, yeah.
Who wants to see it? Oops.
Let me know if you need me to get it.
Uh. Hey, Google Earth man.
Just don't go through his browser history.
Oh, no. No problem with that, no problem with that. That's, that's the house in question, and so the addition will go right on that little back piece right there.
Yeah, yeah.
They're trying to get it out.
You see, here it is, it's going to be right here, and that's a forever.
Yeah, we've got an air ass photo.
Is that better?
Is that better?
Oh, come on.
It's probably from, from Google map.
There you go. You're right.
That little corner to this side.
Yeah, so the blue lines aren't accurate.
Yeah, I mean, take the house and shift it over, you know what I mean?
Or shift the blue over.
If you look to your side, it'll basically-
You can see this house here?
It'll be like that.
Right, you see this house here? They got air conditioning.
Right, so that's over the line already.
They can't get there, they got all these big rocks over here.
In terms of getting to the back, you're saying?
Yeah, I mean, he mentioned about-
And this house is on the line?
Yeah.
This house is on their own line?
I don't have an offset on the survey map that we got from this, but this, this is their house, that, that line right there.
Oh, here?
Yeah, no, here's your property line, right there.
Yeah, this is my house, right?
No, this is the Burnts' house, that's your house right there.
You can see how close it is to the, and this is a survey.
Yes.
So this is a lot more accurate than the Google map, and you can see how close that corner, I don't know what part of the house that is, but how close that is to the property line, right on it.
Because of that pie shape, that's what I've been saying.
Oh, yeah, of course.
Yeah, like you said, if it was rectangle.
Right.
Yeah, so here's what we're talking about here, this, this area right here, the corner of the proposed addition, really being to that property line.
I've got a question, should I get to the mic?
Yeah, you better go back there, okay.
On the other side, there's that air conditioning unit, so that narrows that, that space. I don't know if you've gotten a, a letter, have you gotten a letter from one of the other neighbors who couldn't make it today?
I think number 80, yeah.
No, no, a 41?
No.
Sorry, like a paragraph, may I read it?
Sure.
Okay, this is from a neighbor at 41, he knew we were coming. The Lone Oak, wait a minute, who put these glasses in my pocket? "The Lone Oak subdivision has well over 100 homes, all of which have a 10-foot minimum clearance between their neighbors, at least on one side. When my wife and I purchased our home from the builder in 1989, he told us that nothing can be built between the homes ever, not even a fence. This is to enable homeowners to access their backyards and also to provide room to work on said home, such as roofing, siding, et cetera. Beside the zoning, there was a deed restriction we had to sign." I don't know if this is just handling what. "My concern with the above-mentioned application for zoning variance is that approval would set a precedence. I know that if my neighbor built, say, 5 feet closer to me, I would be unable to use a ladder in the area. It is tight now, depending on the work required. To the homeowners at 50 Tall Tree Drive, I have the same floor plan as they do. We put an addition on years ago similar, similar to their current plan. They are welcome to visit me and see how we did it. Perhaps they would allow a workable solution for their project without the need to encroach on the setback. Sent from my iPad."
Is, is that a letter you can submit?
Of course.
Hey Jim, Jim, question.
Something just occurred to me, it's unusual to have-
Actually, right down there at the end.
A building on a lot line that's built new. I'm wondering if there's some type of blanket easement within each adjoining properties that allows that house to come onto your land, because otherwise, they have no access, they have no way of doing it other than to encroach on your property. If that's the case, then you might be in a situation where you're violating that easement by putting this in there, which, in which case, they could come in and rip it down, so.
I was wondering too, you know, just walking back there and looking, could you put it over a little bit, just on the edge, just on the other side of that window? Right.
We have to, folks, we have to make sure that when we talk, we're talking, we're identifying ourselves, number 1, and number 2, we're talking into the microphone, because this is being broadcast live but also recorded, okay?
Okay.
So if you have a question, that's fine, but let's, you know, the applicant can come up and, and address it.
Right, yeah, I was just wondering if it could be moved over, I know they don't want to be right up against that, it's a, a sunroom.
Right.
Right up against it, but there seems to be a little more room that might work, be workable, I don't know.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Jim? Is that deed restriction something the town would have records of?
Not necessarily.
Probably in their deeds. I do know that at the time that they, the developer built that project, I was here for that, they did put restrictions about fencing, blocking areas, again, the comment that you made earlier about putting a ladder up on the other person's property to get access to the top of their homes, that kind of thing took place. We'd have to look into it and see if you could actually read the documentation that would have been in their deeds.
So, is there a declaration that covers all the-
There may very well be.
Plan development declaration?
There may very well be, yes.
Which would, in theory, possibly even prohibit this happening?
It may.
Can I speak to that?
The town, the town does not, the town does not, you know, if there's a deed restriction in a property where you can't have an above-ground pool, and somebody comes in and applies for an above-ground pool permit, obviously, we don't know if there's a deed restriction.
Right, we'll let it go.
So we'll issue that permit, but the neighbors who are all subject to that restriction have the ability then to take action against the person who's violating the restriction.
Okay. Okay, identify yourself if you would, and then go ahead and address the board.
I want, I would like to address a number of issues.
Okay.
First of all, my name's Paul Burnt, owner of 50 Tall Tree Drive, the applicant. I'd like to address the immediate issue as far as restrictions and such. I'm actually a real estate attorney with Bond, Schenning &amp; King, I actually am their title counsel, so I'm pretty familiar with title on, on this parcel, and there are no restrictions, no such blanket easements. I have my abstract available, unfortunately, not with me, that issue wasn't anticipated, but I can represent that that is actually not the case, so thankfully, that part is not an issue. As far as a couple issues brought up earlier, I would, and I welcome all questions, I'm going to try and remember as much as I can throughout this process. As far as when we bought the house, this was definitely not an anticipated addition. My wife was, is a special ed education teacher, she got headbutted a couple times at work, causing her to have neck issues, the latest headbutt, causing her to have more substantial needs, including having this tub that would be helpful to her, so we started looking at options, we brought it up with, with our contractor and stuff like that. I know, I know the shape of the lot, I knew what we were in for, what we did was try and minimize it. We did address the issue, or I am familiar with the issue of having access between the parcels. If we put this addition on, this addition is just, it's not a hindrance to the neighbor, the neighbor has no access through our lot, they can't get down there with their house there, and there is no easement for them to have access, so this is an issue, if it's an issue, it's an issue for us. Now, we did explore different sizes of closets, with the thought that we were going to do the tub, we were going to lose the closets, we did explore different sizes. I trusted my real estate professionals here, Mr. Peacock is an architect, we did have a smaller size initially, we asked the question, if it got bigger first, how much closer it would get, but also, we ended up, it wasn't a substantial difference as Mr. Peacock described here, so you're talking inches as far as an effect, whether it's smaller or not, it's going to have the same analysis from you, I anticipate, it's not going to make a difference in your decision. So I hit a lot of the issues, I may have missed some of them, but I'm welcome, ask a homeowner the questions that you may have, the questions you brought up, and what we thought about, closet organizers, was our first thought, closets are just too small for that. We have the representations on the drawings, just picture that, picture the length of the clothes, we already have stuff, I have stuff for socks and different organizers underneath, but it's all in shirts, has to be smaller, we've done the best we can there. Yes, closets are, space is going to be marginally bigger, but again, it doesn't affect the size of what will happen here. So I'm welcome to, welcome you to have any questions here.
I got a question for you, okay? I mean, this, this is a shame that this thing isn't orientated correctly, but do you know the distance between this house and the blue line, the neighbor's house, and their lot line, between you and them?
Yeah, I would have to come up and see.
There is a survey map.
Yeah, there's a survey map up there.
Well, no, take a look here and then go, all right? See this, see this, this is the one that's going to be affected, right here, okay? Because you want to put it right there, am I correct? This is your house.
Correct.
Okay, you're going to put the little thing out here.
It's right on the survey, it's 0.8 feet up from the-
So his is directly on the line?
Basically.
Basically, so-
It's 8 tenths of a flight.
And, and what their complaint is, is they're not going to be able to get to their backyard on that side of the house when they have absolutely no distance to get to their backyard, unless they go on your property, is this a fact?
That is correct, but also, they have upset that, but- But they have minimal need for that anyway, they have a fence there, and then there's a little garden and rocks behind there, so, but they have no access, they would have to go around their side with the other neighbor to get to that property, which is what they would have the only legal right to do anyway.
Okay, anything else from the board? Anyone else in the audience care to speak about this?
I'd like to do one more point.
Sure.
And then I'll step back. Did remember, as far as building it out on the side of the house, we were trying to minimize the effect on what you would see from the road, and this does minimize it to virtually nothing from the road, so that's what the goal was, and that's why it wasn't done on the side.
Okay. All right, nobody else in the audience?
Faith Burnt, 50 Tall Tree Drive, just could you answer Al's question about moving it over, why we can't move it over to the, by the sunroom? Thank you.
I'm Robert Antico, the contractor, the people to the-
What would be the-
Yeah, the side property, 48 Tall Tree, they had asked me back there, why don't I just move it over? There is a three-season room there now, and we're taking a window off the back of the home to put the closet there, so it's going to leave us 24 inches, and I'm going to try and squeeze it over even a little farther now, and we're going to put it, a new window on the side of the property, so we can't go any farther. I have to physically be able to get in there to put siding on, so that, that was the answer to her question, I can't go any farther.
Okay.
Any questions to me while I'm up here?
No, that makes, that makes sense. All right, once again, anyone in the audience, come on up?
My name's Linda Etkin, I'm Al's wife from number 48. I had questioned the, the statement that we have no access to the side of the house, we've been mowing it for 10 years, so that is what I, we assumed it was our property. So that, and I'm concerned also about the, the way that the addition would jut out onto our side of the property. I mean, I saw the chalk lines on the grass that was proposed square, and that might just be where the foundation is, and then the scat-
That was an overspray, I had to do that for underground markings.
But was that for, is that where the foundation is going? And then so, so then-
It wasn't measured out.
Okay, so everything will be added onto that foundation, and then the overhang will be more, right? So that'll cut back on the distance between for-
I can answer.
You guys are going to come up? Again, we need you to come up.[1768.23]
The white line she's talking about on the ground, when you, when you go to build, you have to call underground markings, and I just went into the back of the house and sprayed white in the area, just so they knew roughly where we were building. It was not measured out, so.
So, is it going to be larger than that?
I don't know. I didn't measure it.
Okay.
I just drew the lines.
Can I ask you a question?
Who are you asking, Joe?
The young lady.
Yes.
Do you realize that you only have eight inches of property? On that nine, eight, nine inches, we're talking inches now.
Ten and a half. It's .8 feet.
Okay, okay, right. I saw eight, I thought inches. .8 feet is right, okay? Do you realize that that's all you have on that side of your house? If you're mowing it, you're mowing their property.
Yes, I am, apparently.
Okay, I, I just want to make you aware of that, and that, in eight inches, okay, or 10 inches, I'm sorry, in 10 inches, you'd almost have to walk sideways in order to get to your backyard without going on their property.
Right.
Oh, well, I'm just asking you. Do you realize that?
No.
Okay.
And he said that the fence is on the, our house, and the fence is there, yes, but we can access the back of our yard from there, because there's a space between the shed fence and the boulder barrier to the green space.
I, I'm confused. Either you have 10 inches, or you have five feet. Which one is it? Can someone clear it up?
I'll have to check the property line.
Is it, you show me on the map, or you show her? What she's assuming is not correct.
This is the Barron's house, right here. When the surveyor puts these lines on, this is an offset line. So, what that means is that this is the property line that comes down the side, right there.
Okay.
And so, the Barron's house to the corner right now is 7.60.
She's making about 10 foot set there, when she hits 0.2.
And then, this is the corner of your house, right here.
Right.
Your stocky fence down the back.
Right.
And this arrow here with the 0.8 is the offset from the property line to the corner of your house. So, that's 0.8 feet.
So, our house is zero. Our house is eight inches in from the property line?
It's about 10 inches. It's .8 feet.
So, how close is our property line to the new addition?
It, that's, that was my mistaken number. It's 5.4 plus your 0.8, so you'll have 6.2 feet between the two of us.
Yeah, and all their property, by the way.
Yeah.
Not your property, all their property.
So, your, your, the back, where your fence turns the corner right there?
Yeah.
That offset right there is for the fence. That's 0.1 feet, so one tenth of a foot. So, so that point right there where the fence turns the corner just about touches the property line. It's, you know, .1 feet is about one and a half inches.
Okay, so we've been mowing extra lawn that.
Yeah, you ought to dig out your own survey.
Right.
From your real estate file. If not, you could probably get one from the clerk's office, Monroe County Clerk's office. Yeah.
Okay.
Go ahead, Marie, you have a question?
I did have a question for the Etkins. Does this addition proposed obstruct any views out of your windows?
I don't think so.
No.
No. Okay. Because our bedroom is, our bedroom is there, and there's no window on the bedroom side. Thank you.
You can't legally have a window in a wall that's that close, so that was even the case when these were built.
You got to walk up to the podium.
So, the sidewalls have no window.
You know, I went to visit.
This is about 10 times that they've told us, microphone, microphone, they can't hear you. So, any other questions for the witnesses here? Nope? Okay.
Thank you.
Anybody else in the audience care to speak about this? All right. Thank you very much. We're going to take about a four-minute recess. Come back at 9 o'clock.
Yes.
Uh, we will go back on the record and take the next public hearing, please.
Item number four, Timothy Harrington, 1586 Fairport Nine Mile Point Road, Penfield, New York, 14526, requests an expansion to a pre-existing non-conforming structure under Chapter 250, Article 7-713 of the code to allow second-floor addition at 1586 Fairport Nine Mile Point Road. The property is owned by Timothy Harrington and is zoned RE2, SPL number 110.03-1-5, application number 17Z0026.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I currently own a house, one-room schoolhouse that was built in 1849. It has an existing second story that's basically a cape, and I would like to take off the roof on the second story and build up on it using the same footprint, same existing footprint, so that I can have usable space up on the second floor.
So the addition would not go any closer to the road?
No.
And would you be going above the garage or just above the living space?
Just above the living space.
Okay. Can you talk about, let's say, houses across the street or the corner? Are there any other two-story houses in the area?
Yes, there's one across the street, and there is a-
Probably Kitty Corner as well?
There's a cape across the street also.
Okay. But those are, I think, they're taller, or at least they're above your, I think the road kind of, the hills, they're a little higher, right, on the road?
Yeah.
Okay. And then there, those homes, are they just about as close to the road as, you know, yours is?
No, mine seems to be a little closer.
Closer, okay.
Yeah, so the kids couldn't, had to walk to school closer.
Right, okay. In terms of any other changes in terms of exterior lighting and things like that, would there be any changes? Lights put up top shining out, or?
Oh, I will have LED recess cans in the soffit-
Okay.
To illuminate the stone.
So facing downward, not out?
Correct.
Okay. That's all I have.
Okay, just one thing.
Okay.
The addition that you're gonna put up high, okay, what are you gonna put on the siding? Because I know the, the bottom half is, is field stone, correct?
Correct. It's gonna be either a Masonite siding that'll be shiplapped or vinyl.
Okay, so it's not gonna be stone, it's gonna be vinyl?
No, correct.
You changing anything with trees or buffering, or?
No.
Okay, so that's gonna stay the way it is?
Correct.
Because it is sort of buffered a little bit.
Correct. I may add a few more trees in the front, just to add a little more buffer.
Thank you.
I know this is an historical build, I mean, it's very old building.
Correct.
Is it structurally sound to take a second floor?
Yes.
An engineer has looked at it?
Yes. Yeah, we will be pouring, the actual stone walls were actual concrete with stone embedded in it. We will be pouring footers along the wall to hold the, right now there's 12 by 12 piers on the bottom, so we're gonna reinforce that with some concrete.
Is this, is this an historical building?
It's not.
Has it got any significance? Okay.
No.
Well, it has significance, but it's not designated.
Right.
Okay.
Correct.
That was my question.
You gonna maintain the stone facade that's in place now?
Yes, absolutely. That was the reason I bought the house.
Okay, anybody in the audience care to speak about this application? Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Item number five, Christopher Cambar, PE, on behalf of APD Engineering, 615 Fisher's Run, Victor, New York, 14564. On behalf of all these requests and every variance from Chapter 250, Article 7-7D, Chapter 250, Article 10-12B, Chapter 250, Article 10-1013B, and Chapter 250, Article 10-13C of the code to allow less parking, a larger freestanding sign, more building-mounted signage, and more than one building-mounted sign at 2208 Penfield Road. Property is owned by Aldi Inc. and is owned general business, SPL number 140.01-1-6.1, application number 17Z-0021.
Good evening. My name's Chris Cambar. I'm with APD Engineering and Architecture. I'm here representing Aldi. We went in front of the planning board last week and explained that we are going to be proposing an addition to the existing Aldi on Penfield Road. This addition is gonna be off the front long wall, I believe it's approximately 19 feet, and as part of that, we're going to be increasing the building's square footage and removing a little bit of parking. We've reconfigured the lot a little bit, changing the size of the stalls to make up a few of those parking spaces. But as it stands now, we are slightly deficient on the parking requirements. As calculated, we're allowed a 20% reduction in parking if we have shared parking, and we do have shared parking with the plaza, two additional lots within the plaza. And that would require us to have 74 parking spaces, and we currently have 68. So as part of the project and as part of the materials that we submitted, we put together a parking study. This expansion is part of an Aldi initiative to expand and remodel all of their stores that they, they currently own and have built in the past. So as, as part of that, with the increased square footage and the size of the lots that they have, they do run into some zoning issues with their parking. So we've started compiling information regarding the parking numbers that we need and parking numbers that are required. So while we are slightly deficient as far as the zoning code is concerned, Aldi is not concerned that this lot will be underparked for their customers. One, they feel that these expansions will produce more of a higher price point per customer and not necessarily a large increase in customer, new customer activity. Certainly, they do want to bring in new customers and stay competitive within the market. But with that said, their average parking is somewhere between, well, somewhere around 40 parking spaces, and we are proposing 68. I'm not gonna go through the entire parking study, but it is in there and it is part of the record. As far as the signage is concerned, currently, they have more of a corner-type entry. They kind of chamfered the front of their wall and they have one sign in the center. They're keeping the same look and feel of the building, and they're basically bumping it out so the elevation will look almost the same, except they're going with more of their standard two-sided entry look, so there'd be signage on both sides of the building, hence the need for the variance from one allowed sign to four signs. And as part of that, they have two logo signs and two food market signs. Those signs are not attached to each other. I'll flip over to the elevations here so you can take a look at what we are proposing. So this is essentially the existing building, and then this is what the proposed building will look like. They have one sign on one side of the building, and what they'd like is an Aldi logo sign and a food market sign on each side of their building. This side faces the parking lot, this side faces 441. It's a very symmetrical look that they like to have, and as you can tell, they have two different heights, this tower here and this tower here. And what that does, it doesn't allow them to actually join the signs together and make them one sign on either side of the building. As part of our memorandum that we put together, we did a few examples of signs in the area that are similar to that. They're, you know, in the plaza, there's the Bank of America. They were able to join their, their name, Bank of America, and logo together to have two signs on either side. Essentially, if we could slide them together, we'd love to make them two signs, one on each side. It's just not feasible with the architecture and the look and feel that the architect is going for and that Aldi would like to see here. However, we do feel that it is a pleasing look, and it does fit in with similar signage within the area. I will keep it short, and I would love to address any questions that you may have.
Okay, so, thanks for the information. Could you tell me how high each of those letters are in food market? I just can't see it on my diagram.
Okay. I apologize for that. They're two-foot tall and 18-foot long, so they're 38 square feet altogether.
Are they lit, backlit?
They're backlit, internally lit LED.
Okay. And then, are you looking to keep the freestanding sign out in the front?
Yes, I don't, somehow it got put on the agenda that way. We're not doing anything with the freestanding sign. It is staying just the same, just the way it is.
Oh, okay.
So it'll be, it's more of a ground-mounted sign.
Right.
Yes.
Okay, and then, so I guess I'm wondering, like, when I look at some of the other properties that you mentioned, for example, sometimes there's a trade-off. There's no freestanding sign, but there's additional mounted signs. Sometimes the, the things that you mentioned don't take up very much of the, you know, the, the building. How much of that, with Aldi's food market, is that gonna go cover on a side?
Do you mean percentage-wise as a part of the whole facade?
Yeah.
It's not much.
Like, like, how far out does it go?
So the whole facade is, I believe, 103. That may be before the expansion. They don't have a dimension on there. I don't think I have a floor plan with me.
I think in your, in your present, in your materials that you submitted, you identified the length of the building, you identified the total amount of signage that's permitted by code, and then you broke it down as to what you were asking for versus that total amount.
Yeah, so my-
Yeah, so the storefront length is 191 feet on the long side, which is the side that faces the parking lot, 103 feet on the side that faces the 441.
Yeah.
And that, and the building itself is, the main building is 20 foot 8 inches tall.
So-
So my question is, how far out does that signage go?
Right, so-
Oh, how far does it project off the wall?
Yes, sorry.
Oh, sorry. No, it's, it's, it's maybe six inches at most, maybe four inches. It doesn't project out very far at all.
No, I'm sorry. My question again is, how far out along the wall?
Along the wall, from the corner to the back of the building.
The length of it.
The length of that sign.
The length of this sign, from this, from here to here?
Well, from the beginning, actually, from that, okay.
From here to here?
Correct. So out of 100 and-
This is, this is eight feet, this is 19 feet, and then it's about 10, 10 to 12 feet in between.
So 29 plus 8, right, 37.
So the way we calculate, and obviously you know how we calculate because you've made your calculations in your presentation, the side of the building where the front door is located is considered to be the front of the building. Even though it may not be facing Penfield Road, it's considered to be the side of the building where the front door is. So you take that linear footage of that building, multiply it by two, and that gives you the total square footage permitted by code for the building. So I don't know what the dimensions are at this point in time. So if you were to take that building, multiply it by two, that would give you what you need for total square footage. And then we wanna know what the total square footage is, which is most probably less than that by code.
Okay, so the, the front door will actually face the parking lot.
Yeah.
And that length of the building is 191 feet.
So we multiply that by two.
You get 382. The amount of square footage on the building that we're proposing is 226.
Okay.
So it's-
So you're off by 100 and some feet.
Yeah.
Yeah, I understand it was lower. My question was just how long?
Right, how, if we connected it all together, how long would it be?
That's all, right.
Sorry. It's been a long night yet.
No, oh, no.
For us too.
Yeah. Would you ever consider going smaller with that lettering or spacing?
This is the, and I hate to use the prototypical size for Aldi, but it is their prototypical size signage. It's the sign they feel is, is best visualized from distance. Remember, these signs are up in the air 15 to 20 feet. Smaller signs on this size facade may look a little funny, a little out of place scale-wise, architecturally.
So you feel like this is in proportion?
I do feel it's-
And it's part of their branding?
Yes, thank you.
Got it. And my last question is, would you ever consider not having a freestanding sign when you've got the signage on both sides?
That would be a question I'd have to take back to Aldi, but I'm pretty sure they would not want to lose their freestanding sign as it stands.
Okay. That's all I have.
All right, just to clarify, you're not making any application regarding the freestanding sign?
That is correct.
Okay. I don't, you've cited examples of two signs on corner buildings and stuff, and we're well aware of that. Honestly, I just don't see why you need the food market. I mean, I, I think everybody knows that Aldi sells food. So I get it from a marketing standpoint, why you'd want it and how it's probably standard for Aldi. And I honestly don't have any problem with two of those signs that you have up there, because while you're not on a corner, you have people coming from many different directions. So I get that. I, and you don't have to answer, I just don't get the need for the, for the words.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm sorry, I was just, I was just gonna say, obviously, you would rather have the Aldi sign than food market, right? So if you had a choice of one or the other, you would pick Aldi sign?
Well, certainly, they would, they would pick the logo sign, but it is part of their corporate branding, and not everybody knows who Aldi is. I mean, most people do, I get that, but not everybody does. Not everybody knows what they sell. It's nice to look at the building and say, oh, that's Aldi, that's a food market. They sell food. It's a grocery store. They get it. They make that correlation. That's why they've started adding the food market as part of their corporate branding. You know, you go to most, all of their stores, they will have the food market on there. You know, and I don't wanna compare the Penfield store to every store in the United States, but they do like to go with a similar look and feel. But, you know, beyond that, there's no other store like this store. It has unique architecture, and they try to, to keep that architecture. And I do feel like the signs fit well and, and do project all these corporate branding. I appreciate it.
Okay. Currently, how many-
This design is similar to the cornerstone restaurant down the road on, on 441. They had a similar thing with corners, and they structured the, the entrance. So those corners were symmetrical, and they wanted two signs on each side, and we said, fine, but then you're gonna have to give up your freestanding sign, which they decided to do. And, and you're gonna find that those examples you gave are, are similar. If there's two building-mounted signs, there's usually no freestanding sign. You got the same basic logo, which is very distinctive. You, you got it on a freestanding sign, which already covers the, the side that faces 441, so in my mind, I don't think you need three of them.
Yeah, in my opinion, it does and it doesn't. It is much lower, and it doesn't project out far enough away when people are driving down 441. They will, should be able to see this side of the building up higher, you know, with vegetation and trees and utility poles.
Then maybe they should be willing to give it up then, for a more visible, higher sign on two sides.
Would, would you want to check with corporate about that?
They need to build this, this year, so I'm going to need to have a vote tonight one way or another, because they, they've already put this off quite a bit. They tried to get into the planning board first, and they said, go to the planning board, and then we're back here. We're hoping to get final approval on Thursday next week, and they're hoping to have a shovel in the ground a couple days later. While they would, you know, unfortunately, my client's not here, so I can't bounce those questions off of him and make those hard decisions. But we would prefer to have, you know, both signs on either side of the building and just leave the ground-mounted the way it is. Not necessarily think that removing the ground-mounted is going to affect their operation, or it's gonna affect anything in the town as well.
But you can understand where, you know, there's a precedent, obviously, and we wanna try to keep within what other people have done as well, right?
I, I do, I do understand that.
Okay.
But I do also wanna point out, I feel that this, this lot is unique in nature. And, you know, as far as we are closer up to 441, and then we have our parking on one side, so most people either enter from the backside. So having the signage the way they presented it, we feel is the best for Aldi, and it will keep them competitive in nature in the town.
Is the entrance currently in this, under the existing picture there? Is the entrance currently under that sign right now?
This is the entrance right here.
Well, if you look in the photo.
Yes, it is.
So, so it's currently under one sign that sits right there right now, correct?
Not, no, not really.
So the entrance isn't there?
The sign is on this side of the building, but underneath the canopy, it's actually, the corner of the building's chamfered, so you-
Correct, yeah, it's a 45.
Under exist, under proposed conditions, you'll actually walk in directly. They, they're rebuilding the-
Correct, yeah.
Bring it out. So it'll be more of a square, not a chamfered.
But from up top, you're gonna have basically a square shape, a cube shape on, on the top, so it's gonna be-
Yes, yes. The top will remain similar in architecture.
So from the top, from what you would see from the road or from the parking lot, will basically be the same shape, just a little bigger?
Correct. Actually, I don't believe it's any bigger. It's just, it just moves over 19 feet.
Okay, anything else from the board? Anyone in the audience care to speak about this? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Item number six, Nathan Busek, TY Lynn International, 255 East Avenue, Rochester, New York, 14604. On behalf of Sam Kaiser and Glendavirz, request an expansion to a pre-existing non-conforming use under Chapter 250, Article 7-13 of the code to allow parking lot expansion at 2328 Old Broncoth Boulevard. Property is owned by WDFALC and is zoned R120, SPL number 108.18-1-1. Application number 17Z0024.
Good evening. Nate Bootsek with TY Lynn. We are representing Sam Kaiser and the Glendavirz Restaurant Banquet Facility, which is located at 2328 Old Broncoth Boulevard. The, what we're requesting is expansion to a pre-existing non-conforming use for the expansion of a parking lot on the east side of the property, which is located on, on this rendering. The reason for the parking, the banquet facility currently has around a maximum occupancy of about 200 people for events. They currently have onsite 48 parking spaces. During many events, they do end up parking along Old Broncoth Boulevard, heading out to the kind of southwest. It's an inconvenience for the people attending the events, and it also cuts down on access to the property. A lot of times, they park on both sides of the roads and restrict, you know, if there's a fire or, or something, it's gonna be hard to get through. The parking lot size is approximately 120 wide by a depth of approximately 150 feet, which is about 18,000 square feet. There are site constraints and design elements for the property. We have Rhonda Quay Creek over on this side. We have, once you get to the backside, it drops off, and this is all wetlands. There's a wetland buffer that kind of comes out to about this point. On this side, we're proposing to put the parking lot, it's currently a large berm or hill that's approximately almost 40 feet, 50 feet tall. So the, the plan is to, kind of stage one would be to have a contractor get a, a fill or hauling permit to cut this hill down over time and be able to eventually, I mean, depending on the, the use for the fill or the need for the fill locally, cut the space down so that we can grade out and finally get the parking lot in here. And we've currently gone to planning board for sketch plan review. That's been the first step, and under the recommendation was to, to come to your board for, for this pre-existing non-conforming use for the expansion of it, which is kind of the next step to determine if we move forward. If we can't get expansion, we're not gonna move any forward with any further design. So I'll keep it short. Any questions?
Well, kind of have a chicken and egg thing here-
Sure.
Because the things that you need to show the planning board may impact our decision on whether we wanna allow you to do this. But be that as it may, let's, let's start. How many spaces are you gonna add?
37.
Additional 37.
Yes.
And how did you determine how many to put on? What's, what's, what is, for 200 people-
Sure.
What does the code require?
For 200 people, I believe, let's see if I have that written down.
I can help you. It's one and a half spaces for each two people legal occupancy.
Yes.
And one space for each employee outside at any given time.
Which, which leads to, it leads to about 195 is what, kind of is required for this particular use. Existing, we are way under at the 30, 30 or 48 spaces, and with-
You're gonna be way under even if it's grand.
Yeah, so you're gonna have 85, we need 195.
We're gonna be way under, correct. But the reason why we can only fit the 37 extra is because once we regrade this out and do our tieback slopes and everything, and not get into extreme expensive retaining walls, this is really the footprint that we're left with, unfortunately.
Where's the material going that you're gonna remove from here?
It's to be determined. It all matters on, you know, finding a contractor who needs or who's willing to, you know, take the fill. The, the plan is hopefully that the contractor would, would pay my client for the fill material and/or subsidize some of the cost for the parking lot in the future, but that is still in the works.
And if that doesn't happen, then what happens to the project?
If it doesn't happen, obviously, if they can't get the fill off, then the project doesn't move forward.
And you talked about a gradual taking down of the hill and a gradually adding spaces. How long do you estimate a period this is gonna take to fully implement?
It, it all matters on the need and for the fill materials, for the, you know, whoever the contractor is. If we have a contractor who has a job locally that, that needs fill, it may be gone in, in, you know, a couple months. It may take a year. It's, that's the, the moving bullet, so it's tough to tell.
And again, if you can't get a, a place to put that fill, and you're a quarter of the way through, then what happens? You leave a quarter of the hill, gone, and three-quarters up?
Yeah, I mean, that's one thing that, you know, we're gonna have to work, work out is, is staging and the, the phasing for the project. Do we, for example, say in six months, we can cut the hill back and we'll regrade, and there's no more need for fill for another year? You know, do we regrade this part of the parking lot and put stone in here? It's, you know, and then work our way out and eventually make the parking lot as, as you see it on the plan.
Do you see this additional parking as creating more capacity for inside, having more people there? Or is this to service the existing number of people that are there?
Service the existing. It's, it's as, even by your code, but I can tell you by talking with my client that most events, they're off by, not most, but on the larger size events, 200 people, they usually have about 30, 40 vehicles parking offsite down Old Broncoth. Sometimes they, they bust them in, you know, it all matters on, on the events.
Are you familiar with the fact that there's been some complaints about noise?
No.
Including some that came in on that application, on this application?
Okay.
Can you address how that might affect the noise level at this place?
Adding the parking lot shouldn't, you know, during events, shouldn't increase the noise. You're still gonna have a, about a 40-foot hill or a berm on this side of the property, and same with over here, probably about a 20. So what it's gonna look like is this hill is gonna be going up, and the parking lot's gonna be down below. The nearest house is probably 1,000 feet plus or minus to the east.
Yeah, here.
There's an email here from, that Mike is referencing. So you can take a look at that, read it, and-
You know where 34 Parkview, is that the house?
It's up on top of it.
Up on top?
It's to the east.
Okay. Yeah, no, I'll, I'll share this with my client.
Because that sounds like, Mike, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay.
That sounds like something that should be addressed regardless of expansion of parking.
Okay.
But just wanted you to, to see that as well. But it's, if I'm understanding you correctly from your answer to Mike, you're not looking to increase the number of people coming to this location. You're just trying to create more parking spots, so they're not parking on the road.
They're not planning an expansion to the facility. Right, yeah, so that's all we're looking to do.
No, so what you're telling me, this is gonna be like a ball effect in that area?
Yes.
You're gonna have-
Yep.
A berm-like left?
It's exaggerated, but we do have, this profile goes this way up the hill. So what you'll, what you'll see is cutting it back. So on this side, you're still gonna have a berm on, looking to the east. And the existing hill, which is, is almost vertical in some spots, would be pushed back. And we'd have two-on-one slopes is, is what we're trying to get to work. We may need some small retaining walls depending on, as we get into determining the exact nature of the soils, which our client and our understanding is mainly sand. So, and it does the same if, I don't have a profile looking this way, but it would be, grades would grade towards at probably 2%, 3% slopes towards the western, so north. There would be a berm between, and a buffer between the old Bronkoff Boulevard, which is, I guess, is really just used as a trail now for a trailhead. Yeah, that's, that's about it.
And how's that gonna affect drainage?
Drainage, the, the plan is to have what we have for concept grading as of right now. So right now, we would have any, any drainage that comes off the hill would, would get collected in what we're thinking as possible dry swales, which would then drain to, we're gonna need a SWIP for this project. And with the increased impervious area, we're probably looking at doing a small basin to retain some of the drainage to pre-existing conditions. But right now, it's mainly sheet draining the parking lot to this corner. And then we'll make sure that we don't increase the runoff.
Okay. One of the main things that we're charged with looking at for the expansion of a pre-existing non-conforming use is bringing the use into greater compliance with the code? Can you address that, how this does that?
You know, as, especially with the parking and the use currently being a restaurant banquet facility, we're currently underparked even by code at your 195. So this is getting us closer. And based on, on the uses for typical events, it's gonna keep the parking onsite. It's not gonna overflow. It's gonna help with, you know, if there's emergency, you're not gonna have people parking and possibly blocking fire trucks or ambulances getting to the facility.
Okay, thank you. That's all.
I got one.
Okay.
This is what I'm understanding you to say. I desperately need these parking spaces in order to fulfill my business, right? So they're not parking in the street. But I'll do it only when I get paid by someone else who takes the dirt in maybe a year from now or two years from now.
Sure.
Is that, is that what you're telling us?
The plan is still in the works. It may come down to, you know, the town or the board saying, hey, you need to have this off in a certain amount of period.
So then would he pay?
It possibly may come down to that.
Take the dirt out, but right now he wants to get paid in order to build this parking lot?
It was currently, the plan was to work with a local excavator contractor who needs fill. It wasn't determined if he was going to get paid or maybe it would be, you know, kind of zero cost or whatever to the contractor. He's benefiting from getting the fill and my client's benefiting from getting his hill taken down so he can put the parking lot in.
It, for, for safety conditions, okay? Parking on the road, like you said, and ambulances getting up there and fire truck. Could it possibly be that he's booking two larger parties for his parking lot?
Not sure on that, on his exact number of people. And, you know, I was told his max occupancy was around 200 people for the building. Not sure, I, I don't have information on how many come, you know, to some of these events.
But if there, if people are parking on the streets, there's not enough parking. I mean, we all know that.
Right.
I, I, I think that, at least speaking for myself, I'd be supportive of doing something that allows more parking there because I've been there, I've parked on the street before. But to me, where we are now today, there's just a lot of unanswered questions about this. And it seems like you're gonna need approval from a whole bunch of different other organizations. And, and I understand that this board is one of them. But as Mike started this application by saying, cart before the horse, I think that's, I think that's truly the case here. And given the fact that there are other, and a lot of environmental questions, honestly, I, I don't, I personally don't think that we're ready to act on this at, at the moment. And you can, you're free to comment on that. Somebody has to be first, I guess. But because there are a lot, in my mind, of unanswered questions, in particular about environmental, I'm just wondering whether we should defer action on this until you have more answers from these other entities that need to approve.
I think from a seeker point of view, we have to adjourn it.
Well, yeah.
The planning board really should be the lead agency. There's about, there's five or six things right in front of me. Flood plain, stream protection.
And you have that, by the way.
Federal wetlands, state wetlands, there's county park involved. There's a lot of things, approvals that you need and that's gonna take some time and effort, so.
Oh, exactly.
I think we, at the very least, we have to adjourn this.
Yeah.
And in order to-
But I, I, it's, again, my fellow board members can speak for themselves, but I think it's pretty clear that the parking situation needs to be addressed. And for what that's worth, you can communicate to your client that this board is always trying to be helpful to try to resolve existing problems.
So I'm guessing you, this would kind of be, next step would be to submit back to planning board for preliminary giving answers or probably completing the SWIP and dealing with possibly getting into the, the wetland buffers for, for DEC, you know, that kind of stuff.
Deep slopes.
Sure.
Are you involved in the county park plan in any way? Is there gonna be any grading or anything done, accessory grading to accommodate the project?
Right now, no. What we're planning to do, and it was a comment, these were the sketch plan drawings that were submitted originally. And it was a comment to, to pull back and, and not have any grading or at least have, you know, a 10-foot buffer or so from this property line. So there's no overgrading or, or need. So that's the plan. If we, you know, if we have to lose a parking space or two, you know, it's what we're gonna have to do. So sounds, I'm fine with this and I'll take this back to my client. And, you know, we'll continue to make steps. And would you guys suggest coming periodically or wait till we get through the planning board?
My guess is it'll be tabled and on our agenda, but without any anticipated action for quite some time. So whatever you feel you should update us with any given month, you should do that. The noise issue, because we received that email that you saw that for the first time tonight, strongly suggests you try to address that as much as you can.
Okay.
Now. Not, not at 9:40, but you know that.
I understand.
All right, any, any other questions from the board? You wanna speak about this, come on up.
I do.
Okay?
Ed Linsco, 40 Willow Pine Way, and also Vice President of Penfield Trails. We have a trailhead located right next to this parking lot. And we're in current negotiations with the supervisor, the Parks Department, the County of Monroe, the State of New York, to have a trail link between Allison Park and Lucian Morin Park, which is, one's on the one side of the road, one's on the other side of the road. We're not opposed to expansion, but we know some of the area needs to be updated there because there is a trailhead parking there. We do have a kiosk there. Some of these things need to be moved. We'd like to do some better signage. We've already started negotiations with Baker Commodities and they were amenable to some upgrades in their area. But it's a long process with us, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the audience? Okay. Thank you very much.
Item number seven, Thomas Greiner, Nixon Peabody, 1300 Clinton Square, Rochester, New York, 14604. On behalf of Verizon Wireless, request an area variance from Chapter 250, Article 1311B6E1 of the code to allow the construction of a telecommunication facility with less setback in the right-of-way near 715 Panorama Trail South. Property is owned by the County of Monroe and is Zoned General Business. Application number 17Z-0020. Should be on.
Thank you. Take a minute to hang these up.
Okay.
All right. I wanna thank the, the board for allowing us to, to be here to present this application this evening. I am not Tom Greiner. I am here in his place. My name is Nate Vanderwall with, from Law Firm of Nixon Peabody, here this evening on behalf of Verizon Wireless, the applicant connection with this project. Also here is Mark Kulik. He's the site acquisition consultant on the project. And after my short presentation here, I'm hoping that between Mark and I, we can answer any questions that the, that the board may have. Just quickly why, why we're here and then what we propose to do. As is detailed in this application, Verizon Wireless licensee and regulated by the SEC, in order to maintain those licenses, they're obligated to provide a threshold level of service throughout their licensed areas, across all their licensed spectrums. And, and as part of that charge, they're constantly reviewing their network. Where do we have both current issues? Where do we have anticipated issues that we need to address to ensure, again, that threshold level of service? In reviewing their network in this case, they, they reviewed their Linden Avenue site. That's their macro site. I think it's 825 Linden Avenue, I'm not sure. But that's the macro site servicing the area. It is located just southwest of the proposed Panorama Plaza site that we're here on this evening. That, that, the alpha sector of that site has become exhausted and is unable to, additional traffic, it's unable to accommodate additional traffic on the network in that area. Part of the area being served by that, by that facility is the area, Panorama Plaza and the surrounding area. What, what Verizon is finding in reviewing their network is there's a high concentration of usage coming from this area, which is very typical of retail plazas. Use of their smartphones, and nowadays, it's not just voice, it's even more so, it's the data usage. Oftentimes, you see in commercial areas where there are lines, people waiting, coming in and out of stores, a very high usage and a very high pull from that area on the network. Again, the Linden Avenue site that's providing coverage throughout the larger footprint is unable, because of its exhaustion, to, to adequately provide the threshold level of service, not only to this area, but when the pull is so strong from this area and within the rest of its, that site's footprint. When that's, when that scenario, these, these are often called, you'll refer to them as hotspots. That's how it's referred to in Exhibit E to this report, the RF analysis. You've probably heard that term before. A hotspot, an area that requires an increased capacity to be able to handle the draw on the network in that area. When those arise, Verizon Wireless proposes what are called small cell or microcell facilities. These are oftentimes, and as the case is here, a single antenna meant to provide coverage within a finite area, which then allows the larger macro facility to be able to, provides relief on the macro facility for that area that's providing coverage. So it can then provide its appropriate and intended coverage. Here, the hotspot, the area where the concentration has been determined to be exceeding the network's ability at this point is Panorama Plaza marked here. That's when they designed the search area. That's the areas being targeted. Here, this area right in here, the Plaza in particular, is the area where that coverage is needed. So, once you've found your hotspot and you've determined a microcell, small cell facility is appropriate to address this network issue, next question is, all right, where can we cite, where can we locate this facility to be able to meet that objective?
Okay, just a point of clarification. The green area on your chart there shows what exactly?
The green area shows the, the coverage that will be provided by this proposed facility.
Okay, it doesn't show where it stands.
Isn't the red circle?
The red circle is the search area, you know, is the, the bounds of the service where the, that, the area that's gonna be relieved from the Linden Avenue site. I mean, these are propagation plots, so they're not exact. You know, it's just, it's a study based on what they're finding on the, the signal strengths and within their frequency. So this area generally is the bounds of the proposed coverage from that. So affected in this area by terrain or other obstacles, things, things like that.
So it's not necessarily equally around?
That's correct, for, for a whole host of reasons, some of which I just-
So it doesn't necessarily have to be exactly in the middle of the-
Yeah, it's not a radius.
Because it, topography plays a role or whatever plays a role.
Correct.
If that were shifted some, and not that I'm asking it to be done, but if that were shifted further to the east, for instance, would it still be able to cover that area the way it does where it's proposed now?
Well, I guess it would depend on where that site, where that-
Let's just say it was, let's say it was 1,000 feet.
Well, in this case, my guess would be, would be no because of what this cell is proposed to do. It's proposed to cover this finite area, the plaza in particular. If you, you know, if you were to put it over here, you don't have that line of sight to the area you're targeting.
Right.
All right? So in that case, if you're gonna move it and get it away from, without that view and without that clear line of sight to its intended coverage area, I, I don't, we're speaking hypothetically here, but no, I don't, it would not be able to meet the RF objectives of this project. Stepping back to, you've identified the area where that, where the capacity offload is needed, where that coverage from the microcells needed. Then it's time to find, okay, where can we cite this where it will allow us to meet the RF objectives of this project? In this case, I mean, you consider, again, consider the line of sight to the area you're targeting as well as height. You know, these type of facilities, unlike the macro taller, taller towers, are located much closer to the users, much lower to provide that signal strength, not only to the parking lot areas, but more importantly, in, inside the building. So these facilities are located, they're lower-powered facilities, but located closer to the user to provide that coverage, that dense coverage. In this case, the options available were the rooftop of the plaza itself. And some of these buildings were also explored, all owned by the same company, DD-
DDR.
DDR Rochester, right? And also some existing utility poles, which are owned by RG&E, were explored. Both of those candidates or those options were eliminated as viable candidates. Extensive negotiations with DDR were unsuccessful to reach terms on which to enter into the lease. The same could be said for RG&E, but on a much larger scale than just these poles that were looked at for this project. Negotiations have not reached a master lease agreement or attachment, pole attachment agreement with RG&E on a number of sites. In addition to the fact that the poles, RG&E poles in this area, that could have potentially been an option for mounting the structure, are already at their full, if you will. They can't accommodate the additional equipment that this facility would require, you know, to be installed in the pole. So, the next option that was explored then was installing a new utility pole within a right-of-way in an area that would allow the signal propagation to the targeted area. In this case, they found an option within the county-owned right-of-way on Panorama Trail South, in a right-of-way that has existing poles, and determined that that was the appropriate sighting for this facility. Meets the RF objectives, allowing that coverage into the Plaza and the surrounding area. And there's an area there that permitted for installation of the pole. A 29 and 1/2-foot pole is proposed with a roughly three-by-one-foot antenna mounted on the top of that, on the top of the pole. This project, per the town's code, requires a conditional use permit and site plan approval from the planning board. We were before them and were before them last week. They table that pending both a decision from this board, as well as some additional information, which we will provide them tomorrow, including updated site plans, which I believe was provided to this board ahead of tonight's meeting, only change being the equipment on the pole that's changing. We are here before this board because, as you're aware, the telecommunications facilities ordinance requires a 200-foot setback for towers, telecommunications towers from all rights of way. Needless to say, a utility pole within the right-of-way cannot meet the required 200-foot setback. So, we are seeking a variance from that requirement in the, from the ordinance's requirements. As set forth in detail in Exhibit D, and I'm happy to go through them if you'd like, but...
Really?
Is a detailed description of how this project, this particular pole satisfies the code's requirements for issuing of an area variance, certainly under the public utility standard to which Verizon Wireless is subject, but also under the traditional analysis as well.
You said there was existing poles in the right-of-way in this area? What type of poles are you referring to?
And I'm sorry, this picture is not of real high quality. These are power lines just up the way, and actually are several feet taller than our proposed pole with much heavier equipment with the transformers mounted on top within that same right-of-way.
Those are on Panorama Trail where you...
Yep. I believe there's two or three, two or three in between our proposed pole location, which is right here in front of the Citizens Bank, I'm not sure which one it is, and the intersection with Penfield Road. So, I'm sorry.
And the material, what type of material have these poles, the base?
Wooden, it's a wooden utility pole standard.
Similar to telephone pole?
Yeah, it will look, there's a simulation within your application packet. It will look no different than any utility pole that are currently within the...
And the current poles are in the right-of-way, some of which are taller than this?
I believe that is, I believe that is the case. Oh, there you are. I don't know if you have, I don't have specific heights with me. And speaking with Martin, with Erdman Anthony, the engineer at the plant, where he indicated that the existing pole infrastructure is actually taller than our proposed pole, even to the top of the antenna. I don't have those numbers here, so I don't want to make a representation as to specifics.
Have you done, have you done a search on co-location of other existing carriers' poles?
Yeah, I mean, that's, certainly that's the, one of the, if not the first option that's looked at for a variety of reasons. It's much, it's faster, it's cheaper. In this case, there are no existing poles on which to co-locate this facility. Again, these projects are unique in the sense that they're covering such a small quarter of a mile, you know, radius area for coverage purposes. So, it's much more difficult in those scenarios than when you're doing a macro facility that's covering several miles. You're much more likely to find a tower on which to co-locate. In this case, there were no existing towers of other carriers or otherwise on which this facility could be located to meet the objectives.
Let me approach this from the other way. Is there a possibility, once this pole gets installed, that another carrier could, is there capacity to put another carrier on there? Similar to what they've done with towers? I mean, if you have a concentration problem, another carrier may very well have the same problem. And are we looking at another pole?
This pole itself is just designed for the single, the single facility. It is not designed to accommodate additional antennas on this pole.
Okay, so the answer's no. And you could not utilize an existing power pole or utility pole for what, what reason?
Two reasons, as I understand it. These, the poles in the right-of-way are RG&E poles. There is no agreement, despite many years of attempting between RG&E and Verizon, and I believe other carriers as well, for a master license or lease agreement or a pole attachment agreement, which is, would obviously be required, as well as the fact that the existing equipment on the poles do not allow for any additional structural capacity to handle new, you know, additional equipment on the pole. They're full, if you will.
And what you've shown us in the diagram is pretty much what it's going to look like? I mean, as far as what's on the pole?
Yep, yep. This is an actual elevation and that simulation has got the equipment that's proposed on it. That is correct, yep. That's based on the original drawing, but the changes that have been made in these new planes is the generator receptacle is, I mean, so nothing that's going to make any difference in the visual, you know, effect of the pole.
So, there's actually less on this pole now with revision than there was on what the board's looking at?
Yeah.
And is this one side of this is facing towards the Plaza? On the opposite side, there'd just be the pole?
Yep, the equipment's, yep.
Okay, so it's only on one side? Okay.
I got a question. If there was a utility pole in the Eastman already available, would you be able to mount to that and then not have to come in front of this board? I don't know if that's a question for Jim Costello or...
No, the problem that they've run into is, obviously, the pole's not that tall, but the problem is others will be coming in with taller poles. We're in the process right now of preparing a new zoning ordinance to accommodate this issue. So, this may be, hopefully, this will be the only one you would see at some point in time in the future, but we are trying to address the taller poles, and we're in the process of preparing a document to do that now.
I'm more wondering if, you know, if there was a pole in the utility Eastman already there that had space, would you even have to come in front of this board to mount it?
I think they have to mount too much equipment on the pole to accommodate an existing pole.
If there wasn't one there already, would they have to come in front of us?
Right now, yes. The answer's yes.
They still would have to?
Yeah.
Okay, I got a question. If this is primarily for the shopping center, okay, you, do you have to use public land or can you put it? Because we've had some where you've put them on in back of people's homes, right in Penfield. So, why wouldn't, if this was kind of strictly for the shopping center in the area, why didn't you go in and have, right by Cops and Panera Bread, there's a great big island that people wouldn't run over? And I mean, you know, it's less traffic that goes past there than goes down Penfield Road.
They couldn't get the landlord.
Yeah, we, I mean, that, the land, there were extensive negotiations with the landlord to reach an agreement to cite it on the landlord's property.
So, you're doing this for the landlord, and the landlord's giving you trouble about putting it on their property.
They're doing it for their client.
Yeah, I know, but I'm just saying, it's...
What is it, what kind of, what kind of, other than getting a permit from the county, what kind of payment or what kind of taxation is involved in this from your perspective? You're not getting it for free.
The highway work permit was obtained already from Monroe County. That's been done. The poles is not, is going to be installed and owned by a SQF company, and then Verizon's entered into a licensing agreement with them for the space on the pole.
But there's some entity is going to, I mean, you're not going to get this for free. I mean, you're going to have to pay somebody something, whether it's being taxed by, for a pole or something of that nature, versus going out and renting or getting space from a Plaza or wherever you may go. You're still going to have to pay somebody something to put this, or you're proposing it. I mean, I didn't mean to get into this person's, but there's a rationale as to why you're putting it in the right-of-way versus going on private property. I'd like to know what that is.
Well, my name's Mark Kulik. I'm with Tilson Tech. The logic is, we can go on private property, and we're more than happy to do that in certain instances where it works. In this instance, really, the only place that worked was in the public right-of-way. And from a standpoint of, you know, land use, it's most effective because you're keeping it within, you know, existing similar facilities, i.e. communications, electricity. So, you're keeping like with like. But in terms of who you're paying, I don't really know the right-of-way laws in terms of the payment across the board, but typically, the only thing that a municipality or a, say, the state or the county, that they can charge is only an amount that's equal to their cost of maintaining that. So, the public right-of-way is there for the public utility to be placed. So, it's not necessarily a rent situation. There are certain costs, but it's not set up as a rent situation.
Public's not entitled to make a profit, basically.
Correct, because that right-of-way is there to give the services to the community.
All right. Anything else from the board?
Are these micro poles pretty new? Is this something that's fairly recent that has come out?
The micro facilities themselves are fairly new, last, what, three, four, no, four years? And they run, they, there's a variety of different types of installation methods, but this technology with the exploding demand on the network with, basically driven by the data, is what's brought about this newer technology and this, to address that need. The traditional macro facilities that were for so long before this board and other municipalities are, I mean, those are pretty much in place. I mean, not all, not all across the board, but generally, the larger coverage footprints are in place.
At least in our area, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
I have a quick question. Can this be tampered with by people? Because it looks pretty low.
Everything is in, within locked cabinets.
So, nothing is exposed?
Correct.
And lock cutters?
It's, I think it's, a key, it's a very unique key that's, I don't know the specifics.
So, it's secure?
Correct. I mean, and they have every incentive of keeping it secure to make sure their facility is online and...
Not electrified, is it?
Operating.
So, what happens if, let's say, so like, a snowplow hits this?
I think it would be the same as if a snowplow hits any, if it's any, any utility pole. I mean, it's going to have to be, it'll have to be repaired.
Then you have the same service you have now before the...
Yeah, right. Your service goes down a little.
Your service goes down. And then how long would it take to fix that? Don't know.
I don't know the answer to that.
All right, anyone in the audience? Okay. Thank you very much. That was the last public hearing. We will take a five-minute recess and reconvene in the back. Thank you. Number one, as staff and council were just discussing, under the State Environmental Quality Review Act, this would be a type-one action, requiring coordinated review with the planning board. So, because of that, I'm going to make a motion to table this, and then also request further information on the...
Sanitary, just the sanitary issue.
Sanitary.
One second.
Okay. Any further discussion on that? All right, all those in favor?
All right.
So, that was sort of a dual motion there, Pete and Christine, that it's finding that it's a type-one action.
Yeah, it is a type-one action.
And then also...
Does that make any sense why it's a type-one action?
It's a type-one action.
It's historical across the street.
Exactly. It's in close proximity to a designated home across the street.
Okay, okay.
It's not an environmental issue per se, it's the fact that it's a...
Proximity to...
Socially environmental.
Okay, so we, that's the action we took on your application tonight, tabling it for environmental review purposes, and then also to get some information that staff can discuss.
You should come in and see us. You should come into our office and we'll sit down and go over everything with you, okay?
Of what the other board has to give us before we make a decision, okay?
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Who else do we have here?
You've got, you've got...
No, I have the...
Verizon.
No, Aldi's got...
About all of them here. At number five.
One out.
That's, that's an unlisted action for the memo.
I'm sorry, this is the Aldi's one we're doing?
Correct.
Okay, so, this was unlisted?
Second.
Requiring more further action?
No, negative declaration.
Negative, no likely.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
So, my feeling is, after really thinking about this, is I want to keep it in character with other buildings in the area. And I am understanding and sensitive to corporate brand, I really am, but I think that the trade-off has to be also the freestanding sign goes. So, if you're going to have this additional signage, then you don't have a freestanding...
Wait a minute, you want all the signage? You want Aldi's and food market along with it?
Yeah.
That's four signs.
That's four signs.
Yeah, okay.
But in it, but on the condition that there's no freestanding sign.
Okay. Let's take each one of these as individuals then, because I think we're going to have to vote on them individually.
Well, he's not, he indicated he's not, he wants a vote tonight anyway, and he cannot make that decision on behalf of his client. So, I understand where you're coming from, but I don't...
So, I can't create a, something that says, all right, here it is, or it just...
Well, you can, you can, you can make whatever motion you, you can make a motion to table, if you like, for him to get it. He's not going to be happy with that. He's raising his hand over there. But, I mean, you can make, as I said, whatever motion you certainly want to make.
You can make the motion to relieve them of the freestanding sign. They can always come back and make an application later on underneath to get it.
But see, that's why I want it individually. Let's do parking spaces for buildings.
Well, he raised his hand. Go ahead. We're going to be here till midnight anyway, so go ahead.
There's a couple of options that I see that if everybody's not happy with the four signs and the monuments, so obviously, it's the, we could do a conditional approval that if Aldi wants the two logo signs and the two food market signs, the ground-mounted sign has to go. Or if they choose that the ground-mounted sign is there, could they have some semblance of signage on the building? Maybe just the two logos, the food markets go.
Well, that's what I was going to structure it.
It sounds better.
So, would either, so you could structure it two ways, just say Aldi keeps the two logos and the ground-mounted sign, or the four building-mounted signs that are proposed, and they have to remove the ground-mounted sign.
And leave the choice to them.
Yeah.
Right. So, that was my intent. I think I just need some help putting some words around it. I'm fairly new here, so...
And to assist you, Wegmans also has the word "food market" on their, on their building. Wegmans does not have a freestanding sign on their property.
Right, no, this would be in keeping with other signage in the area.
I mean, you know, to me, the problem is now we're going, well, you can have this and you can have this. Why don't we say one thing or the other, and then they can say no? I mean, if they don't like it. I mean, I, I don't like, I personally don't like food market. I mean, Aldi's is not exactly, I mean, they're a great nanny brand. I go to them in Florida.
Well, and they're established.
So, if they really need food market, and it sounds like what he's saying is, he would go for two logo signs on the building and keep the building-mounted sign.
He doesn't know yet, and he's thought about it a little bit.
But that's not really consistent with what we've done with other applications.
I agree.
And I mean, I just...
Now, you've got three logo signs that are basically the... They've got two logo signs that are basically the same.
I mean, the way I look at it personally is I don't like saying which signs you're going to do. I like just saying, we're going to allow you two signs on, on a building, no, no monument sign. And that's been pretty consistent with what, with what we've done.
I'll second that. That's a motion.
Okay, so I move that we grant a variance for the four mounted signs and no freestanding sign.
Okay, you're not granting a variance, you're granting a special permit.
Sorry, a special permit.
Well, variance for the number of building mounted signs.
Variance is run with the land. And that, these do not run with the land. This is a special permit that you're offering them, or signage as a condition of doing something.
Sure. In other words, if Wegmans moves in, they can't have Wegmans food market. They'd have to come back here to get Wegmans food market.
That's right. It doesn't run with the land.
Okay. Well, I think that, that's just always the way that we phrase it. You're right.
Okay.
Okay. Well, so we have that motion. Anybody second it? No. Okay. Okay. Anybody have another motion?
Yeah, I move that they, we, we grant them a, a condition of permit to allow the two building-mounted Aldi signs, no food market signs, but they have to give up the, the monument sign.
Wow. Okay.
See if he get a second on that one.
That's his motion.
Can you say it again?
Two, the, the two Aldi signs with no food market on either one and no freestanding sign. The existing sign has to go.
Second on that?
Okay. I'll go back to my setup before, which I think is pretty similar, but I just said two signs on the building, no freestanding sign. I don't, I don't like picking what signs someone wants for the
Well, I agree. Only, only, I don't know why they have to
No, you just said Remove the monument, although he said no food market period.
He's saying we've got four signs, he'll give them any two plus no, plus no
Oh, you were going with the
He said no food market. So I, I don't, I don't like making those, those decisions.
With the idea that there's four signs. The food market's one sign, the Aldi sign is, right?
People are going
Correct. Right, right. So two.
And your choice with any two of the four.
That's the way I usually am, yeah.
Plus no monument. I'll second that.
All right.
Wait a minute. You made a motion there.
Did Andres make a
Yes.
Yes.
Two, two building-mounted signs and give up the freestanding. That's Andres's.
It's their choice on which signs they use between
Right.
Food markets and Aldi's.
And might second that. Any, does everybody understand that?
Yeah.
Anybody have any further discussion?
No, I, I, I don't like it. I don't think, they
Well, that is further discussion.
Well, that's further discussion, as I said. I mean, they show us where there are also is two, two different signs on different buildings and they have a free mounted sign. Now, you're going to make them dig up with
Well, I didn't think they showed us that.
Yeah, they are. I, I know around that corner there. They didn't show the, they didn't show the monument sign, but there is one on some of those properties.
Okay, how about right next door to the property that came back? How many times for the sign?
The medical isn't having it.
Okay. All right. I'm just saying
Cornerstone
You're going to make them tear up a concrete monument sign?
No.
No, I'm not going to make them.
No.
Well, that's what they'd have to do in order to have the two logos. I mean, the two logos on each side of the building kind of show at a distance and you want them to dig up a monument. Give them two logos and a monument sign.
I heard him say two different things. He said, you know, they need the monument sign, however it's low and the, and the higher signs are, are more visible.
Vote however you want. I, I made my statement. I disagree. I, I will, I'll say no to it. And you guys do as you want.
I mean, the way I look at it is, really, the outside of the building is going to look the same at the front. And that's why I asked the question. You know, you have two square faces. Currently, there's only one sign on one. There hasn't been a need to put a second sign on there. Either it's because it's serviced by the monument sign, so if that covers it, then that's fine, then we'll allow the other one. But, you know, why need the, you know, why do you need the extra ones when you're just pushing the building out bigger on the other side? Was, was the way I looked at it. I understand the entrance is below it, but it's, that's not, you're, you know, you're not looking for the glass door, you're looking for the signs up top.
And if it wasn't adequate, they wouldn't be expanding their operation.
And plus, and there was the, what was the building, the white building out front there next door that came back twice when they wanted the sign in the back? And we said one was enough out, out front, which is same proximity.
Dennis.
Was that the Dennis? Right. And anyway, that one.
That one a couple of times.
Mm-hmm. And, and did we end up giving a monument sign for that? I don't, I don't know if we did.
There's a sign out there.
Monument plus, plus two building?
But there was almost more directional.
All right. So we have a motion for two building and give her a freestanding and a second. Any further discussion on that? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
All right.
Wait a minute. Is there two?
Danny and I opposed it.
Right. But it passed.
If you're opposing, right. And you're opposing Andres's
That's right.
Motion.
Of tearing out the
Three to two.
No, that's
Or Well, it is. That's what
Wait a second. Hold on, hold on. Do you have it? Or? She's typing.
He didn't say that.
It's Andres, Mike and I.
No, you didn't. You don't have to have a reasonable
Right.
Ayes.
Okay, what, what exactly is the motion again?
Two building mounted sign, give up freestanding.
Right. Two building mounted signs and take out the freestanding.
Right. And if they don't want two building mounted signs, it stays exactly as the site is right now?
Does it say that in the
Yeah. That's, that's That's basically what, what you're implying. If they
Well, let's put it in there, Andres, is my point. Okay? It's not what it's, it's what's in the motion.
But it wouldn't need it.
The motion's pretty clear.
Yeah, I think it is. I don't, we don't, and it's already been made.
As you have it.
I got two building-mounted signs and give up the freestanding signs.
Yes. Okay. That's fair.
I move, I put a motion, forth motion to grant a variance for a reduction in parking spaces.
I'll second that. All right.
A motion to approve the
Reduction
Reduction of parking spaces.
Parking spaces to 68.
And I really, I, I mean, I think they approved, they met their purpose. I think that's fine. And Andres, second?
Yes, ma'am. Any further discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. That was unanimous, I think. Uh, let's see. Let's go to the, not the tower, but the poll.
The poll. I make a motion if this is an unlisted action?
Wait, wait, which one are we?
Number seven.
Number seven, second.
And, okay.
Type-two action, according to the memo? You want it unlisted?
It's unlisted.
All right. So, and then a negative declaration as well?
Yes.
All right. I'll second that.
I would second it.
I thought you were, you were going to coordinate the review.
No, no. That's a separate motion. I mean
No, no, no. You just, you just made a motion.
You cannot, you cannot determine
The planning board is already
What do we do on number one? Did we, number one?
We tabled it.
We tabled it. But we said it was a type-one action.
It is a type-one action.
Coordinate
Which requires coordinator review.
And they're going to do that.
They're going to be lead agents.
In this one, you're telling me I can't do a type-one action? No. The planning board is going to
They're already lead
They're going to request lead agency status and you're going to
Yet they haven't gone to planning yet.
Okay.
Erased and seconded.
So there's a table.
Yeah, I moved the table then.
I'll second.
To coordinate with the planning board. We get everything you heard up until now.
Hold on. Let's, let's make sure we get it right and then you can chime in.
Is there any seeker?
Not yet. It's going to be a coordinated review. With the planning board. With the planning board. So we're tabling it to allow them to complete their Now, do you want to send anything to the planning board?
Yeah, tell them, you can, can we send a memo saying we're in favor of it?
Yes.
Yes.
All right.
Okay. You're scratching your head for what reason? Other than there's an issue?
If, if at this, when, if at this point we do a coordinated, that means then we have to go to the planning board next week, they declare themselves lead agency, then we got to come back here, you consent.
You don't have to come back here. The board, the board will make a decision after the planning board makes its decision. You can come to the meeting if you want, but they'll make that decision.
If one, if there's coordinated and one, one body declares itself lead agency, the other one has to consent to that before they can act.
And we will do that.
We will. We'll come out.
That's what we're telling you. They'll, they'll support
But that will require another two weeks for the meeting, right? I just want, it's, it's not an option just to each do single agency review?
No, and the planning board could get, I mean, if the planning board sees fit, it could say that it grants the approval, subject to the ZBA granting as variance as requested. The ZBA has just indicated that it's going to send a memo to the, the planning board saying it supports your application.
Okay.
And, and lead agency.
And lead, and it's lead agency request.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. So one is on two.
Do you make a motion, first of all, we'll go, it's a, I'll make a motion
Hold on.
You brought it to table number seven.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I always want to make sure.
All right.
Yeah, unanimous vote.
All right. Number two. Are we all set to go to number two?
Okay.
Yeah, what was the seeker?
I'll make a motion and it's an unlisted action, no further
No, negative declaration.
Number two?
Second. I'll second a negative declaration.
I'm sorry, I missed it again.
Yes, we're on number two.
You know, next month, we're going to cut down on the number of applications. I'm telling, I'm not kidding. I'm telling you right now.
We already have seven.
This is two meetings in a row and it's, it's, it's too much. It honestly is.
Okay, wait. Can we go, can we
Yeah.
Number two's seeker.
Number two says unlisted action on my sheet.
Yeah, right. And that was
Oh, because it was already
That was
That was checked by Joe, seconded by me.
Aye.
I'm waiting for her to
Oh, I see.
Get them writing so that
Thanks, Dan.
All set? All right. All those in favor of that?
Aye.
Okay. The merits now.
Okay. I make a motion that we approve this. It's a submarine business. It's just a use permit. They're going to have to go and do all the things with the fire chief and the county and everything that's all on them before they open up, so.
How about outdoor seating?
You know, I'll tell you, I, I can't see where there would be any outdoor seating there. I, I mean, I'm, I'm going to make them, well, you want to do that separate motion?
Well, is there a way to let code enforcement handle that if it's an issue?
Condition is that they keep access open.
Yeah. As long, as long as they keep access open.
They have to maintain access along the walkway and they have to maintain access to the doorways, the entrances to the buildings. They may be able to be done. They may have to have smaller tables with two at them, but it may be able to, I haven't seen the sidewalk. I know
Well, I, I was just there. I was there, I mean, it's at the end of my street.
You're not putting like
I was there the other day and I went back absolutely perfectly today in order to do it. I don't see how a table can go
Is it possible to get three tables?
I can see two little...
In 20 feet?
I could see two, like, two person.
No, I mean, these tables are 20 feet. If you put three tables side by side by side.
I can see those little square ones where you got one person on each side along the edge, but anything that sticks out like the big round ones.
So two?
Can...
Yeah, let's go two tables. We'll give them two tables.
With two chairs each?
Two chairs each.
And he's putting garbage can in?
Right, yeah.
Do we have to limit that? I mean, can we just let them... As long as they're keeping access and meeting... You know, I mean, the code enforcement can come and handle that if they're blocking it, rather than say you have to put two tables and two chairs only.
Well, Joe says it's not possible to get three.
Actually, Andy, what do you think? I mean, you're the person that's going to be going out there if there's an issue. Would you rather have us give a number, or would you just say, "Outdoor seating in a manner that does not impede pedestrian traffic on the sidewalk"? And it doesn't matter to us what your answer is, so honestly.
I guess it really doesn't matter to me either.
All right, well then...
I believe it.
Well, wait a second. Could they take liberty and then go down past their...
Whatever number they have, they've got to live with it.
Okay.
They cannot go to four, five, or six. They've got to do whatever you tell them they've got to do, whether it's two or three.
Well, let me ask you. If we give them the three, and you go down there and see to this block on something, you can knock it down.
So, no, what you do is you say, "As long as they can comply with the fire marshal's requirements for accessibility on the sidewalks, safe accessibility..." They can have up to three. They can have whatever number you see.
Up to three, I like that.
If they can't do that, they can't demonstrate that, then they have to give it up.
Okay, then...
I like the wording of up to three.
Yeah, add that in, whatever Jim said.
Rather than two or three.
Up to three, but they have to comply with the fire marshal's.
Right, yes.
Determination has to... Accessibility.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Second, okay.
Who seconded?
I did.
All right, any further discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, number three.
Uh, number three, what do we have? We have a type-two action.
Second. All right, so on the seeker, we have a motion that it's a type-two action requiring no further action under seeker, and we have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I struggle with this a little bit in terms of what Pandora's box we open if we allow a variance encroaching into the, you know, closer to the sides. I mean, I understand that the neighbor has, you know, stops right there, and they're going over. But what if this happens at every other house type thing?
Can I enter that?
Sure.
Every other house doesn't have that glass thing in the back of it where you're forced to... If it didn't have that glass thing, you could move it over.
Potentially, but like, that room doesn't actually allow it to go much more. When you look at the footprint, the wall stops, and then they got about another foot and a half or so, and then they'd have to wrap around. But it's, you know, I get what you're saying. With that said, I mean, there's only 13 parcels that that really affects, and so I think there's a there's a strong case to say that, you know, they do have a, you know, a difficulty with that layout of that land and how it's set up. So with that, I'm going to make a motion to approve their variance.
Second.
Joe?
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve the variance and a second. Any further discussion? No conditions or anything? All right.
I don't think I need it, no.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Four.
Uh, let's see. This is a unlisted action, neged deck for seeker, no likely impacts.
All right. So the motion under seeker that to determine this is an unlisted action, and issue a negative declaration.
And, Joe?
Yeah.
Joe seconded that? Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, on the merits?
Yep, I'm going to make a motion that we approve this... What are we doing? This is a non-conforming with the pre-existing non-conforming, so I'm going to make a motion that we allow the second-story addition above the residential. What's good is they're keeping it above the residential, so they're not... If they're going above the garage, I'd have a little more concern of being so close to the road, but they are staying above the residential, so the footprint won't increase. Across the street, there are homes that are two stories that are on the road, just the same. So it's keeping it in character with the neighborhood. And it's an old home, and that's just the way the neighborhood's worth. The road's kind of built up around them.
Okay. So a motion to approve.
Second.
Further discussion?
We have two seconds.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't hear the second.
Just pick one.
Just pick one, yeah.
Marie.
I get the first one.
Okay, motion to approve and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Did all the...
Sorry, Marie, I didn't hear the second.
I didn't even hear it either.
Don't even...
Landowners?
Number six.
All right. I think the planning board should take media agency on this, so that means he can't determine what type of action it is. So I would move the table it up at any event.
Second.
There's too much going on. You really cannot... I don't think we can make an intelligent determination until some of those... Some of the plans, yeah, are a little more detailed. It's just too ambiguous and too indefinite.
Yeah, how long it's going to take.
So we're tabling it for...
Delayed payment.
For a plan of action from the applicant. How do we want to...
Planning board has to do seeker.
Yeah.
That's the first thing. So we can't have action on after that.
There's a number of different things that have to be done, and then we need more definite details as to what their plan is.
Do you want a courtney review?
And, yeah. Right, how long it's going to take, you know, if in fact they find somebody that's going to be able to renew this material, et cetera, et cetera.
If they can get more spaces, if they can't get as many spaces.
I mean, I think more spaces there is a great thing, no matter what, so I mean, I would be in support of that, regardless, because I think from a safety standpoint, getting them off of the highway and into their own property is...
Yeah, I agree, but I don't think we...
At least, I'd like maybe send a memo saying that we are supportive of...
Trying to solve the parking problem.
You know, right, yeah, yeah, yeah. So, you know, so we do want to do something like that.
But I don't think we should approve taking, starting to take down a hill.
No, gosh, no, no. So are we putting any... Is there any timeframe on this tabling motion?
I don't know how we can.
I don't know either. So we're not...
There's a lot of different agencies. They have to go see before they come back to you.
So we're not... This motion is not requiring any specific action by applicant for the next meeting. Yes, that's my question.
We're pending with any board.
Do we have to carry this on our agenda for a year, two years?
Well, that's up to you, but I would say it's going to be several months.
Yep, okay. So we have that tabling motion. Did we get a second?
Yes.
Joe?
Joe, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, it's seven. So are we done with the current plan?
I think so.
Usually I skip one.
Oh, we didn't do that.
Yep. I'm talking on usually I skip one. Okay, guys. 20 to 11. So why don't you tell us what happened at the other boards, review committee and also planning?
Well, we've been... The applicant's been the planning board for sketch plan approval.
Okay.
We appeared before your board maybe a month ago.
Yep.
And at that time, we had just been brought on board. We were preparing a plan. I think we gave you the whole spiel about what Sam was looking to do, but you wanted us to quantify the numbers.
Right.
And that... So we completed the survey. That plan reflects the numbers, and that we'd like to move ahead with this. Our next step is to submit next week for preliminary final with the planning board and move this project ahead.
Can you just... The quick scenario of what's the difference between what you presented us and what that's going to say, because we haven't seen it?
Okay. What this says is that we're... Let's start with setback variances. We have a front setback on... We have no issue with it.
Let's put it this way. Are you making... You want the same amount of apartments in the back and the same amount of building in the back?
The... Yes.
Okay, do you want the same amount of building in the front, the house, or more or less?
No, the house is not... Is staying as is, is being converted to offices for Sam's business, and that will be solely office. The building in the back will be garage on the main level and his home on the second level, so...
Exactly what you presented before?
Yes.
Same variances that you came for before?
Same, yes. Well, the variances are setback and coverage.
Same number of feet?
Well, no. What we've done is by doing an actual survey and putting everything on there with the plan, we've detailed those numbers.
So why don't you give those to us?
Okay. We're asking for a front setback variance from Rossman Drive. By code, it's 80 feet, and the 80-foot setback off of Rossman is over in the neighbor's property. So we're asking for proposed 14.29 feet. While that... The existing house is at 14.29, our structure is going to be at 16.79. So we're asking for a front setback from Rossman Road for the new structure, the new garage building of 16.79 feet in lieu of the 80 feet required by code.
And it was 19.8 last time?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
We are asking for a rear setback of 10 feet in lieu of the 30-foot required. And we're asking for a side setback of three feet in lieu of the 20-foot side setback. And coverage, the maximum lot coverage per code is 65%, and we are asking for a lot coverage of 68.6%. So an increase of 3.6% on a lot coverage. And those are the... Those are the four variances we're requesting. We meet the code with regard to parking, and we meet the... Well... I know, Jim, the building, the front setback off Empire, where the existing building is not...
It's a pre-existing situation.
It's pre-existing. It is 30...
Not being expanded. No, it's not.
So the structure in back has gotten larger than what it was a month ago?
Uh, we're showing yes at 52 by 50.
Okay.
What is the margin on this?
Jeff?
I just measured a single-car garage because we had four garage doors, and if you measure the four garage doors, in the space you need is 12 feet, so four times 12 is 48. But then we need... We forgot, we need the stairway to go upstairs. So, and that was leaving the four feet to get a stairway to go upstairs. But we didn't go past the house, so it's the same distance from Rossman as the house. It's a little less, if not more. And last time we were here, the discussion was the water, so we put underground swimming pool, whatever it's called, for the water. So we got that covered.
So what is that?
It's restored.
It's stormwater mitigation.
And that'll be... I mean, that'll be further addressed by the planning board in the site plan approval process, but...
Okay.
All right.
Were you able to talk to your neighbors about this?
I talked to them when we were leaving that night, and I told them that we heard Mr. McMahon, we were going to take care of the water situation. I understand. My daughter lives on the street. We're going to make sure there's no water issue. That's their biggest concern. The lady across, she was worried about seeing the snoko. I explained it with the building there. The snoko's going to be gone. She was worried about her value. I told her that the size of the building and the beauty of that building is going to make her property worth more, not less. They seemed to be all on board. They didn't leave here upset or anything with us. We were here the other day for a meeting. Discussion was the parking. We did the layout of the parking. There's enough parking there to substantiate what we needed for. It fit as all offices. I mean, the other discussion the other day was, do we make the garage a little smaller? We can. It would just basically, I'd have to get custom garage doors and make each garage door a little smaller to get the stairway to go upstairs.
So it's not going to be any big impact if you did what you just said, make it somewhat?
If I made it a little smaller, it wouldn't be the end of the world. I mean, you might, you know, lose a couple mirrors here and there occasionally, but...
But it would still be a four-car garage, and there's no way you can make it like a three-car garage and, you know, house, I guess, six cars instead of eight.
Well, I mean, the size of the garage basically dictates the size of the upstairs, and what he's looking for, living space. And, you know, it's not that the entire second floor is going to be living space. There's going to be a large deck in the rear corner of that, that within that footprint, not that protrudes beyond that garage, but, you know, he's looking for suitable living space, but they're downsizing from a large existing home.
And I currently have pretty much a four-car garage where I'm at, and I didn't want to go backwards.
Yeah.
I mean, it was... The size of the garage is important to me. The smaller doors is doable. It's just it is tight with some vehicles to get in and out with mirrors and stuff, and I just... Again, we're not going past where the house was, so I didn't think it was going to be an issue. I think it would almost look better if it was more symmetrical and the same depth from Rossman as the house.
Okay. So your hope is you go next week to planning board?
We submit next week.
Okay, and you're going to present there, and then what do you anticipate after that? And I'll tell you why I'm asking this in a minute, but...
Well, we would expect... I mean, our application is going to be for preliminary final site plan approval.
Right.
And we would expect to get a... In the perfect world, we'd expect to get an approval with conditions at that point.
Next week?
No, no. We're submitting.
Well, but that's what I'm asking.
They won't be going to the meeting.
We won't be going to the meeting for a month.
Oh, okay, all right.
Okay, so, yeah, there's a... I think the submitted date's the 23rd, Jim, or something. And then we'd be on for the June...
All right, here's why I'm asking that. Honestly, I thought one of the things we'd get tonight was some sort of indication from the planning board about how they felt about this application, and I see nothing.
They haven't heard from it yet. They haven't reviewed it yet.
Well... Conceptually, they reviewed this from a sketch plan standpoint. Okay, in the past, we have had memos from them saying, "Albeit a sketch plan..."
They kind of talk about it here by saying they have concerns for lot coverage.
Right.
The setbacks and...
Right, and you guys... Maybe you haven't. You weren't involved at that point. We're talking February.
Yes.
So what I would like to do here, now that we have specific numbers, and they haven't changed very much from last month, but I would like, because these are significant variances, they are, generally speaking, is it going to improve the site? I think so, but that's one person out of five. I would like to know if the planning board is going to really massage this thing a lot. Then I almost feel that what we're doing here at this point is not meaningless, but pretty close to moot. And you guys will be... You may be back here with a whole new plan, asking for something else. That's all I'm looking for, is an indication from them, not for them to make a decision for us. We have our own job to do, but we seem to have, as of late, honestly, been wanting for some indications from them, and on this one, I want something from them, to be honest with you. Yes, that's a long way of saying that that's what I'm going to do. And whatever form it takes, it doesn't have to be a work of art. I just have a feeling that based upon that, they may be a completely different plan here. Maybe I'm wrong, and if I am, so be it. But it's nothing... Tabling it is not going to slow the process down anymore.
I'll second the motion.
I mean, I'll add that, I mean, I still feel, I think this building is going to be too big for the site, personally, but I think that's my view right now, even as it stands. Now that it's gotten larger than it was before, I still think it's a little bit too large. I mean, you've got one building here, and now a second building behind it, and a lot that's smaller than pretty much any lot around it is asking a lot for that lot. And I think we're looking at a similar situation on the other parcel that came up tonight. It's, you know, a lot to fit in on one space.
Yeah, and I get that. I do think that the applicant, the concerns that have been expressed at our public hearing have been, to a larger degree, addressed. And that's why I look at the current plan almost as more of a site plan and planning board issue. If the planning board looks at the site plan and the size here and says, you know, we're okay with it. We think it's a good use on this particular property, that's going to have a lot of weight on my decision of whether or not to grant the variances.
I would agree with that, because they do have the insight of progress in planning for the town.
But there's no question, sheer numbers, the variances here are significant, but...
I think the planning board, in reverse, would like to hear input from this board as it moves forward towards the site plan, because...
I think he...
Well, you can make note of mine, is that I think this is a fairly substantial...
But you're one member.
I would tend to agree with what I understand.
You're just one of five, so...
Well, three of five right now. I mean, who thinks this is a lot of coverage of this property?
If... If this plan did not ask for a coverage variance...
It's 3%.
Yeah.
Well, it's... But does it?
That's not what's holding it up.
No.
I just think it's... I mean, to me, it's a substantially large building in the back in a neighborhood that has really no building this large on itself. And I understand that this is more of a business commercial space, so it's kind of like this hybrid-type land. And I don't have a problem with the building in back, but I guess, you know, if I saw like a, you know, a three-car, there was, you know, something a little more scaled down, where it was a little farther away from the edges, a little more of the property. Similar, I mean, most of the neighbor's homes are, you know, I think, 1,000 square feet, 1,200 square feet.
It's elevated, it's visible.
Yeah, it's just, it's prominent there.
So, you know, hearing you guys talk, don't... I made the motion, you may have even seconded it, but don't... You know, let's say planning board comes back and says, "We're in general agreement. We're going to do some tweaking here, but we think this is a good use." I don't... You come in and you say, "Well, it's too big anyway." If you think it's too big, and no matter what they say, then, you know, you can make your own motion now. I'm just saying, me personally, I would like to hear from them, because I... There are some applications that are more zoning when they're before both boards. This one, I think, is more of a planning.
Well, especially since it sits on a commercial...
Yeah.
I mean, I think this is commercial, basically, this whole road, right? Quite a bit of it, or at least maybe it starts down here.
No, it is. It's commercial. It goes to residential.
And I guess that's the one criteria where I think that really does come into a planning standpoint, where they see these and they say, "Okay, that's going to fit better, because it is, you know, a commercial up front."
Yeah.
Do you want to make a formal memo to the board, giving your thoughts, or do you want to just us convey it? They're probably going to watch this meeting and see what you're saying, but I'd be happy to prepare a memo for you.
Well, I mean, I think if the planning board came back and said, you know, this larger structure, I mean, I think that's a concern that all of us share here. This is a larger structure than what we're used to seeing. Now, if they're going to say that, you know, this is in harmony with what we're anticipating going on out front here, and it works with the area, and it works with the commercial district and the business, and we don't see an issue with how that looks long-term, you know, I'd be more apt to say, you know, I would tend to agree with that, because we offer variances for other future thoughts, if they have that foresight.
Okay, so my motion to table stands then?
Yeah.
And did you second it?
I seconded it.
All right, any further discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
And if the planning board wants a hint, I think you got it.
Yeah, I hope the applicant can.
Yeah. Generally speaking, the board, this board as it currently sits, is not in favor of the variance requests. Planning board comes back and says they think this is good, that may change things here. I think that's a fair way of saying it. You've heard what I've said, and you've heard what they've said.
Any chance the board, you guys, would maybe just consider going down Empire, two doors down, the Mika Anti-Tomaso Building, house, garage in the back, offices above it, less coverage than this, house behind it, less coverage than this, the house next door to me, giant parking lot behind the house. I'd rather have a...
Larger parcel, right?
I'm sorry?
They're much larger parcels, I think, too, though, aren't they?
You know what, I'll tell both of you, you're free to submit anything else you want to this board, because it's table, and, you know, an analogy is always good as well. I hear you.
Have you got other examples, like you just described, and you want to get them in writing?
Yeah, and it can be... And it can be an email. It doesn't have to be a formal letter, an email's fine. Take a look at this property.
All right, thank you very much. Have a good night.
Good night. Okay.
Want to talk about the next meeting?
Yeah, well, yeah, so let's just, because this is two in a row, and we're... And honestly, I'm losing it a little bit.
Let me ask you, would you be willing to, we've done it in the past, you and I, just to do it, would you be willing to break it up in half and have two meetings next month? If one on your regularly scheduled date, maybe the following Tuesday? At least you can get out sooner on both nights.
Well, let's go through these and see how complicated they're going to be. For some reason, I mean, it seemed like there were four or five of them tonight that were just killers. And I'm not...
Tough night.
Yeah.
Okay, so Empire both had...
Pizza place, pre-existing plaza, space, new vehicles going in.
Right.
Dog grooming sign is...
Also a permit, right, use?
Number three...
Pre-existing dog grooming?
Yeah, that's the one that we approved.
I'm trying to think where 2217 is.
It's across from ours.
Right.
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
It was January.
Yep.
And...
So the first two seem pretty simple. The third one, this is the... They're coming back another time?
And I don't know exactly what the application will tell you.
Well, I have it upstairs. It's about building mounted.
But they have a... Oh, okay.
They're going to ask for additional signage.
All right. Then, number four, area variance, additional structures on the property.
Yeah, he has one shed. He wants another one.
Dog, hot dog cart.
Hot dog cart at Autozone. Which one is Autozone?
That's an, that is a request you may not have dealt with in the past. It's not really a conditional use permit, it's an itinerant vendor's license, you probably haven't done those lately. But under our ordinance, under section 162, when you ask for an itinerant vendor's license, that's somebody staying at one spot at one time, selling from the place outside.
Exclusively?
Exclusively.
It's next to the house that, that.
They have to go to you to get an approval, so that the town clerk can actually issue the itinerant vendor's license.
Okay.
She's coming in for a hot dog cart for the.
Do you, is there any other further reading we can do, or you think that it'll be explained pretty well in the, the code?
Oh, we'll get you all the information for that, it's, it's actually probably not a very difficult process.
It's just like another business in a sense.
She's gonna have a hot dog cart on the side of the.
Right, it's a freestanding business, not with wheels.
Right.
Okay. Well, so, so honestly, so far, I'm feeling better about this. A lot of these seem kinda simple. Patio.
Who takes it?
I know.
Let's not discuss the rest.
Oh, really? So patio's a patio, as long as it's not those.
Existing patio or new patio?
Do we know 130 Milford?
I don't know.
Because if it's there.
Is it what?
Do we know if it's an existing patio?
Do they just need relief because they found to have one? Milford 130, actually, you would know.
130 Milford.
Has a violation been issued for 130 Milford?
No.
Or they're selling and they found something?
I don't think so, no.
All right, so they're gonna do what?
Who knows?
So Don's original, looking for a tent.
I think they've been putting a tent up on their condition, or temporary re-permit.
Yeah, every 4th of July, they, now they just wanna keep it up longer.
They wanna keep it up through the summer months. They're gonna ask for a condition use permit.
Again, nothing too complicated. Number eight, shed close to the property line, is that existing, do we know? Brentwood?
This time.
127.
I think it is already existing, no, just the number 10.
Is it possibly, are you gonna get more than this? When's the filing deadline?
Well, if they were gonna withdraw their application, well, they had that one, but you kept them online, so you're okay. I think, the deadline's tomorrow.
Yeah, tomorrow, yep.
All right.
No.
So, and then you've got.
1600 Penfield.
They're coming in, that's the application for the, the old car wash, I'm sorry, the old classy chassis car wash was done, it's the old Clean Town.
Oh, yeah, the one they were doing about five years ago.
Oh, the one.
They're coming in, they, they're coming in because they are obligated with the VEC to only build within the confines of the existing pad of the old building. They can't exceed out, they can't dig any footers anywhere outside that pad, so the old.
Because of the water, shouldn't they go down?
Well, no, it's because of the remediation program that they've, they've signed up with. So as a result, they, I think they had 29 parking spaces on the old site, they, they're going to have 26 parking spaces now, just because of the configuration, putting in a little more green space, that kind of thing, so they need to get a.
They're landlocked by where they could, they're forced by.
They, they have a unique circumstance because of the remediation process.
Because I thought they had plans to.
We're in this again, we gotta go to the planning board.
Yeah, they're getting ready to get approved on the planning.
So why, why, why do we need that one next month?
We don't even have their application yet.
They're going to be making that.
They put a big X in it and tell them the following month.
We're gonna cut that, you know.
They are table manner before the planning board. And they wanna start working this summer to get that site cleaned up, and I think.
Everybody wants to work.
Well, but we wanna get that site, we wanna get that site cleaned up.
And the last one is for.
That's a Blue and Coke. That is, that's a situation where they're looking for multiple signage on the building, similar to all these.
Is it the former Walmart? They're cutting it in half, they're cutting it in like four.
That's right.
Pieces, and Burlington's gonna be one of them?
That's right.
All right, okay, well.
So I can do one, or we can do two, it's up to you.
No, I, again, looking at this more, talking of, of, some of them are, many of them are fairly simple.
And that's why I said number nine, I mean.
I would've said that about tonight.
If you wanna cut it down, that's the one to get rid of and let them.
And, and so, and we're gonna have.
I figured nine.
We have at least three tables.
Yeah, so, I mean, if you cut that one out.
They'll probably all have no action.
You're not gonna have any action on at least two of them if not.
Okay, all right.
We probably have one on, on the pole.
Boy, if we get any more tomorrow, unless, unless it needs, unless they need to go because there's a house closing or something like that.
Dan's feeling sick, isn't he?
Yeah.
We'll, we'll let you know.
I just, it's not, I'm, I'm not complaining, it's just that after a certain while, you start getting impatient, hearing things differently, and talking over each other. Yeah, that's all.
Yeah, I feel like fatigued, it's hard to, I wondered if we could talk about.
Yeah, we used to have, we used to have ten.
Every time.